Get our meeting started. So I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Nishova Regional School Committee tonight at 6:32 PM. We will start with Pledge of Allegiance. You can rise and join us if you choose.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so the first item on our agenda here, I am happy to say, is to welcome two brand-new members to the Nishova School Committee. I'd like to give our new members just a moment to introduce themselves and share whatever you choose. It's totally up to you. Just your name will suffice if you'd like, or maybe just where you're from and what brings you to us. So let's start with Jessie.
I'm Jessie Davis. I have a graduate, a senior, a sophomore, and a fourth grader, and I'm in Bolton.
I'm Lindsay St. Kewitz. I am actually originally from Stowe. I was originally Lindsay Karstick. I'm from Stowe. And I have a kindergartner and a two-year-old.
Welcome, guys. We feel really lucky that you guys have chosen to do this, so thanks for your service. Yeah. So we met with the new members not that, or the three of us met for the new member orientation last week, so they are raring to go. They know everything they need to know and are feeling, I'm sure, very confident. Welcome. Traffic's terrible, right? Terrible. Okay. So we were just introducing our new members here. We have Jessie and Lindsay. Hi. Yay. Okay, so citizens' comments. Moving right along, my friends. Just kidding, I'm not jumping that far. We're going to go to the school committee reorganization. So as you guys know, the June meeting is usually set to be the organizational meeting, and that is where we are. So the first thing that we need to do is elect our leadership, and so we will start with the election of the chair. And the way that this works, our regional agreement... Alita, can you get everybody a paper? It needs to be by a ballot vote. I almost forgot something.
I have paper right here. Is that easier?
Yep. Everybody needs a piece of paper. Okay. Well, let me say this. Everybody needs like three pieces of paper. Because the three officers that we have to elect are the chair, the vice chair, and the secretary. We will also appoint a treasurer, but that is already there. Sorry, guys. Last time we did this, we didn't do the ballot vote, and that's against the Republican Party. So I'm going to write it right there. Maybe you can rip up that.
Oh, yeah. Just got a few pieces.
Oh, I can just... I got mine.
Hi, Ash.
That would be pretty helpful.
Yeah. Does anybody need some? I've got more than two papers. All right. So...
What year did you graduate?
I think 2006.
I was 2007. Graduation. Okay. I'm glad.
That's enough making you feel...
Okay, so the regional agreement outlines how the organizational meeting should proceed to appoint and elect our new leadership. Like I said, we need to vote for a chairperson first. If there is a previous chair present, that person presides. Whoever wins the chair seat after the first election, that person will then obviously proceed by running the rest of the meeting, and we will then take nominations for vice chair and secretary. So the way that it works, our regional agreement, is that you can nominate, and then there's no need for a second or any kind of vote like that. A simple nomination will do, and you can nominate yourself. Once all the nominations are on the table, we then will write down the person who we want to vote for, and you will then pass those ballots to me. Is everybody clear on the process?
This is way more fun than last year.
I know. It's exciting. So our new members are going to get a taste of how amazing this job is right away. Okay, so let's start with the chair. I'll nominate you. Okay. There are no other nominations? Okay, we do need to proceed with the ballot vote. Tell the person who you want to elect, and then pass those to me. Please. Yeah, attention as possible. You can fold them because it's a secret ballot.
We're just going to get our job. Please, how should we...
You can do it. This is a whole new thing.
I know.
It's 16 years, this is the first time I've done this.
And so the reason why I know all this is because when we rewrote the regional agreement, the ballot vote was not some, or was something that they made us put in, but it's required by law. Also, Amy Coles is not here, but to the policy subcommittee chair or anyone else in the future who's going to run policy, the policy does not require the ballots. We do need to change that, which is something that I did notice over the weekend. Anyway, Alita, do we have a winner?
10 votes for Leah Vickery.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone. So I'm happy to continue the work. Yay. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to move on to nominations for vice chair, and I'm going to jump out in front and nominate Amy Cohen. And I'm happy to take other nominations. Seeing none, please vote.
This is hard work.
I'm so sorry. It's taxing, right up at that.
It's kind of a lot less exciting than you guys, right?
Yeah.
But it actually is needed at one point.
I know.
At least a pass.
Reminds me of my day in high school. I'm the one that takes the fringe off. I couldn't.
I'm also the teacher. I always tell my students, don't you jerk it down. It's okay.
I ripped off way too many pieces of it.
Do we have one? I think so.
Yep.
Do we have a magical winner?
Unanimously for Amy Cohen.
Very good. Thank you, Amy. Whether you like it or not, you are a vice chair man. Thank you.
Happy to serve.
Okay, guys, so as you know, the school committee also has a secretary position. This position is most important when it comes to executive session. This position takes the meeting minutes during our executive sessions because Alita, who normally takes our minutes, is not a part of the executive session. And so I will take nominations now. I'd like to nominate Joe Beeson.
Before you close the nominations, can I say something? Seriously, and then this is serious.
Sure.
Nothing to fit tonight, but in the future, you might want, we might want to consider as a committee also having the secretary be the parliamentarian.
Be the parliamentarian?
Yeah. So if any issues come up regarding rules of order, you rely on the, it would be the obligation of the secretary to be at least have a passing majority on the rules of order.
Okay, we can discuss that.
Yeah.
All right, everybody, we have one nomination on the table. I saw no others, so why don't we proceed to a vote?
Unanimously for Joseph Listroyd.
Fantastic. Thanks, Joe, for giving that up. So now that we have our officer pool in place for one more year, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, and that is identifying which meeting calendar option you prefer. So if you guys refer to the meeting materials, and I assume, are you guys online? Everybody online? Okay. Okay. So when we look at the meeting materials, you'll see that Alita worked up a couple of options for us. Option A, they're very similar, very, very similar. The only differences are the way that May and June are constructed. And so before I take a motion on one of these, I wonder if there are any questions or comments.
Can you highlight the differences?
Yes, of course. So I'm looking at option B. Option B actually gives us one additional meeting in June ultimately. And here's the logic, is that I feel like this meeting right now, June 5th, it couldn't be kind of avoided that we had to end today because the next Wednesday meeting would be Juneteenth, and we couldn't do that, so then we would push it out to the end of June, and we said, no, it's okay, let's just keep the regular calendar. But next year, that problem doesn't exist. The 18th is a Wednesday, and so what I would posit, and you guys can disagree if you want, is that I think that what we need is the June 4th meeting to wrap up the business of the year, maybe even do the superintendent evaluation at that last meeting, so that Kirk has a little bit more time to just get everything together and compile all of his data, because he had to present the last couple of years with some incomplete data, which was one of the things we read in the evaluation, I think Sharon would agree. So we could wrap up the business of the committee on the 4th, and then the 18th would be a purely organizational meeting with, you know, I argue no business, but if need be, we could do a little bit of business on the 18th, but that meeting would just kind of truncated to organization. Go for it.
So with the Plan B, or the option B, is there any problem with the town meetings? And like, would new members then be doing the superintendent evaluation on June 4th?
So the way that we got, so the way that the regional agreement reads is that the organizational meeting will be held in June, and that that will be the first meeting of the new members. So that flexibility was written in to allow for this possibility?
I have actually two questions. My first question is, I think we're going to be now on a three-year cycle for the superintendent evaluation?
Two, two years.
So that might help in June. My other question is, when does school end? I don't know about, you know, what other people do. I know my family, when school ends, we're not, we're gone.
Right. Yep. It's a vacation slot. So I know it's done the 14th this year, which would be the 13th on that, right? The last day of school is what, Alita? Does it, I didn't say on here. Probably the 13th? So it would be competing after again this year.
I would have a conflict with that, but that doesn't mean that you shouldn't choose the calendar. I'm just wondering if other people might find that that's a, it's difficult to do that after school.
Got it. Scott.
So I actually am in favor of the meeting with the extra, the calendar with the extra meeting in June, because I know that these last few meetings this year have felt jammed and rushed, and I feel more comfortable having an extra meeting to work with.
With some really important stuff, right?
I think I'm also in favor of option B, as long as the organizational meeting could be virtual for June 18th.
That might, that might cure the problem. Yeah, Sean.
Can we do ballots virtually would be one question about that. But, but my act, if only we had a parliamentarian. My actual comment was going to be that we might want to make sure that the towns understand the starting date of the newly elected people, but his mind wasn't in alignment with that, right?
Interesting. How so, Sean?
My new term started before our last meeting.
In terms of your swearing-in term?
Yeah. So the swearing-in...
No, 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 on that paperwork.
Ah, so, okay, so Lancaster has no bylaw that requires X, Y, or Z, and so therefore, whatever Lancaster does defaults to the regional agreement. And so I'll touch base with your town clerk to make sure that the processes are synced up. Yeah. Go ahead. Sharon, Jackie?
The last day of school is the 13th for next year. But I know a lot of families, myself included, like, people take that time to kind of like recoup before they jet off. I do like the idea of having that virtual be an option.
The ballot question is an important one, so I could investigate that further. I do know that by Zoom, you can do polls, and I wonder if that would suffice. Yeah. Any other questions about the two options? The other small change is that the meetings in May on the two options are on different dates, just to continue the every other. So not that that would...
So if, um, under option A, it's the 7th, 21st, and 4th?
It's option B.
I'm looking at option A.
Option A is 14th and 20th.
I'm looking at option A. Yep. Option B is 7/21.
7/21.
And 4th.
And 4th.
Yeah. I think, what are the only differences?
You can note, also, you're voting on the entire thing, not just the two options, but what is identical in them, one little note to you guys, is that January and March have three meetings in each month, and that is to accommodate in January the budget workshop, which would be on the 15th, and in March, it's to accommodate the public hearing on the budget. So this is pretty difficult. I just wanted to call it out. It would also set our workshop date as August 21st, Wednesday, August 21st. Is that okay for your purposes?
Yep.
Okay.
What?
Yes.
Workshop days, that sounds like it's a move into college weekend time. What, what's the obligation for that?
Yeah, so the workshop is the, is the event where the committee gets together. We don't necessarily do the business of the school committee. We set our goals, we investigate our protocols, we look at the strategic plan and kind of map out what direction we're heading in. It's about a four-hour meeting. It's usually held at Wedgewood Country Club in Stowe, and so...
It's an evening thing.
It's an evening event. There's nice dinner. If you, any meeting...
Like, I know that the 22nd this year is like a move-in day, so I'm assuming it's probably around the same. I don't know if that's usually when your workshop is good.
It is always on that week, but I don't know if we had anybody who's, I mean, I had a friend, I, we had kids moving in, but our kids are in uni, my kid goes through math, which they start in like October.
Your daughter studies September.
But with, like, with any meeting, if you guys can't attend, it's okay. Obviously, your constituents want you here, but if you can't attend, it's okay. Just let me know in advance, because we need to make sure we have a forum. Take it as it comes. Yeah.
I don't remember, is the public budget hearing in-person?
I think it was last time. It was virtual.
Right, the year that you...
It doesn't have to be.
Yeah, plus virtual, so that more people could attend. I think it's actually better.
Yeah, it's part of that, right?
And the budget workshop was virtual as well?
Yep. No, the workshop, the initial workshop was in-person.
It was part of our virtual committee meeting?
Were we virtual this year?
We were virtual this year.
I'm mixing.
Yeah, this year we were in-person.
Okay. So, you know, we can work that out as a committee and just make those decisions, too. But we typically do one in-person, one virtual every month. Okay, any further discussion? Joe?
I'd like to know if we accept option B.
I'll second that. Is there any further discussion for option B? All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, it looks like option B will be our calendar. Thank you, everybody, for that.
I am having connection issues. I'm not on.
Can you find the NRSD BYOD?
BYOD.
Bring your own device to cover this message. Once you find that, you should just be able to use your email information to log in, username and password. Like, I'm L. Magrino, NRSD.
That nice password that you gave me is right down.
I'll find that, as soon as the business of the committee moves forward, I will, I will send that to you. Okay, guys, so the inherent in that calendar was the school committee goal-setting workshop date. So is everybody cool with that? August 21st is now the date, so put it in your calendars. It is an important date. If you can make it, please do. Also, the meal, the company is wonderful, and the meal is just as good.
It's a good night.
Yeah. All right, let's go to the 24-25 Subcommittee Assignment Survey. So as you guys know, that's Lindsay. Did she find it?
Are they the same?
They are. Okay, yeah. So there is a survey, a Google form that is in the meeting materials. It is your opportunity to tell me which subcommittees you would like to serve on this year. I am actually going to go to the meeting materials myself and open it.
I think I've already responded.
If you've already responded, fantastic.
No, it was from last year.
I opened it this morning and said I had already responded.
When would you do the end?
Hang on, that is a Senate. Are you in it? Anybody in it right now?
Yeah.
I'm in it.
Do you want me to refresh?
You'll have to refresh, yeah.
Yes. You need permission.
Okay. You try it again.
Still not working.
Ooh, it's working now.
There we go.
Got it? Okay.
Don't refresh, go back. You're like, I'm going to get it.
So guys, this survey is your opportunity to tell me your preference. So we, of course, need people to serve on all the committees. Some are more, some are funner, funner than others. So I do need to spread out the love a little bit. So just tell me what your, your top preference is. What I hope to do is give everybody at least, one of their assignments will be something that they really want to do. The other assignment might be something that I need you to do, but what I also like to do is spread out your talents. There are certain things that we are all good at, and we have a really, like, very strong membership on this committee, and we'll kind of push you around as we need, as we need to. I will definitely touch base with you if I find that it's more complicated than I want it to be, and I won't, I won't surprise you with something that you might feel uncomfortable with. So I wanted to let you guys know that the high school building committee is on the survey, but it's so that Joe, Amy, and I can hit it, can like select that, because we are the three members of that subcommittee, and that membership is set by the MSBA. And so until one of us needs to step down from it, the three of us will remain, so don't make that one of your choices. I will also say that I think I took collective bargaining off. Oh, no, it is. It's still there. So we are probably not going to need much time or attention given at the collective bargaining subcommittee unless we need a pop-fly MOA or something that needs to happen to adjust the contract at some point this year. But we have two, three-year contracts in place for our bargaining units. That, all that work was done over the last couple of years. So if you are interested in that, though, you can definitely mark it as a preference, but there's probably not a lot of work to be done there. So there is kind of a lighter lift on our plates this year with regard to subcommittees, but keep in mind that I would like you to maybe serve on two each. Okay. So fill this out either if you're, you absolutely know how to do it, then you can do it now. If not, please do it before the weekend, if you can. All right, that's that. All right, guys, we have no citizens' comments. Here we go. Okay, so let's move on to the consent agenda, and I wonder if my vice chair can give me a motion.
I can, but can I just ask you something again? You need to be, you need to be a motion that accepts the... Move to accept the chair, move to accept the vice chair. That was how we used to do it.
That's how we do it. Yes. Okay.
I, I move to approve the consent agenda of June 5th, 2024, continuing draft meeting minutes of May 22nd, 2024, and warrants of June 7th, 2024.
Drive second. Thanks, Sharon. Do we have any discussion on the consent agenda? So just for our new members, the consent agenda is a tool that we use to kind of bundle these items at every meeting. It will include at least one warrant and potentially meeting minutes of a previous meeting, and it sometimes will include more than that if need be, but it's a way just to like put all of these procedural motions in one little bundle and pass them together. Sometimes if you don't like keeping them together, people can make a motion to separate them and pull them apart, and then you can vote on them separately. But for right now, we have a motion on the floor to approve the entire consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor? I am actually going to go to the meeting materials myself and open it.
Is that already responded?
If you've already responded, fantastic.
No, no, it was from last year.
I opened it this morning and said I had already responded.
When would you do the end?
Hang on, that is a setup. Anybody in it right now?
Yeah.
I'm in it.
You'll have to refresh.
Yeah, refresh.
You need permission.
Okay. You try again.
Still not working.
Oh, it's working now.
There we go.
Got it?
Don't refresh, go back. You're like, I'm going to get it.
So guys, this survey is your opportunity to tell me your preference. So we, of course, need people to serve on all the committees. Some are more, some are funner than others. So I do need to spread out the love a little bit. So just tell me what your your top preference is. What I hope to do is give everybody at least one of their assignments will be something that they really want to do. The other assignment might be something that I need you to do. But what I also like to do is spread out your talents. There are certain things that we are all good at and we have a really, like, very strong membership on this committee and we'll kind of push you around as we need, as we need to. I will definitely touch base with you if I find that it's more complicated than I want it to be and I won't surprise you with something that you might feel uncomfortable with. So I wanted to let you guys know that the high school building committee is on the survey, but it's so that Joe, Amy and I can can hit it, can like select that because we are the three members of that subcommittee and that membership is set by the MSBA. And so until one of us needs to step down from it, the three of us will remain. So don't make that one of your choices. I will also say that I think I took collective bargaining off. Oh, no, it is. It's still there. So we are probably not going to need much time or attention given at the collective bargaining subcommittee unless we need a pop fly MOA or something that needs to happen to adjust the contract at some point this year. But we have two, three year contracts in place for our bargaining units. That, all that work was done over the last couple of years. So if you are interested in that, though, you can definitely mark it as a preference, but there's probably not a lot of work to be done there. So there is kind of a lighter lift on our plates this year with regard to subcommittees, but keep in mind that I would like you to maybe serve on two each. So fill this out either if you're, you absolutely know how to do it, then you can do it now. If not, please do it before the weekend, if you can. All right, that's that. All right, guys, we have no citizens comments. Here we go. Okay, so let's move on to the consent agenda. And I wonder if my vice chair can give me a motion.
I can, but can I just ask you something again? You need to be watching that except the.
Move to accept the chair. Move to accept the vice chair.
That was how we used to do it.
That's how we see it. Yes.
Okay. Okay. I. I move to approve the consent agenda of June 5th, 2024, continuing draft meeting minutes of May 22nd, 2024, and warrants of June 7th, 2024.
Drive second. Thanks, Sharon. Do we have any discussion on the consent agenda? So just for our new members, the consent agenda is a tool that we use to kind of bundle these items at every meeting. It will include at least one warrant and potentially meeting minutes of a previous meeting. And it sometimes will include more than that if need be, but it's a way just to like put all of these procedural motions in one little bundle and pass them together. Sometimes if you don't like keeping them together, people can make a motion to separate them and pull them apart and then you can vote on them separately. But for right now, we have a motion on the floor to approve the entire consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, so those are passed. For the school committee chairperson update, I will just say that I'm looking forward to the main event of the year. In my opinion, that is graduation is coming up this Sunday. And I know that a few people have told me that they can join me at graduation. A couple of people have children graduating, including Jessie, Amy, and I think Scott. Yay! So I will also be present. I hope, Joe, you were able to attend as well. Fantastic. Thank you, everybody. So we're looking forward to that awesome event. And of course, all of our leadership will be there as well.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, it's gonna be great. Okay, so for student representative report, it doesn't look like Eva is here. So keep going.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So superintendent's report is next. Kirk has a couple of announcements for us before we get to new business.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to reverse the two items here because the equity audit final report actually will lead us straight into new business with Dr. Megmail Brown joining us today via Zoom and our Owl technology. So we're all crossing our fingers that that goes well. But the first thing I want to bring to the committee's attention today is, as you know, this is our last meeting. If only we had that second meeting in June. But I put before you a job description statement, which is that Innovation Pathways Coordinator. We talked to you about the grant that we've been awarded and how this position is funded through that grant. And in looking at our strategic plan and the goals that we have and having success this year, the communication specialist role that's been doubled up with our bridge handling from our extended day coordinator, this actually is a great opportunity to combine the communication specialist together with the Innovation Pathways Coordinator because so many of the elements on those two roles don't tell together very nicely in terms of interfacing with the community, interfacing with business, interfacing with civic leaders. It just goes beautifully together. So that job description is included in your packet tonight and I'm requesting action because by taking that action tonight, you give us the ability then over the summer to do the job postings, which we're, you know, we'd have queued up and ready to go and be able to fill the position. So this is a new job description and when we have a new job description, we do come to the committee for the approval of that job description.
So Kirk, you want us to perhaps put that on the table right now before you move on?
I think that would be prudent and then we can probably just go to the next call. So all entertaining questions.
Okay, so before we make a motion on this, do you guys have any clarifying questions or even joking questions?
Do you, this person's role to be kind of 50/50 communications and innovations pathway in terms of their, how they're going to be spending their time?
I think the lean is going to go to Innovation Pathways Coordinator as we look at it now. Combining it with the Extended Learning Coordinator, we found, we did it, we got through a building project in the year, but it really is a draw and it really pulls away from some of that work sometimes. So we're taking advantage of this, this opportunity now. But I think it will lean more to that direction.
And you found that the Extended Learning position, that, that 1.0 position, you thought about 20% of that time was spent on the communication piece? Is that how it worked out?
I wouldn't, I don't think it was necessarily, I wouldn't say it was necessarily that much time. It's, it's an ebb and flow. So for instance, we've been preparing for the groundbreaking ceremony on Friday. So in recent days, in weeks, yes, more, but there's flow times where it isn't.
Okay. Any other questions? If you guys see in the meeting materials, the grant, I noticed that the grant is going to pay for this all at first and then there's a reduction in the amount that the grant will cover over time.
The grant will pay $68,000 now and will augment that with the money that we budget for contracted services and communications. That is what we put into the position this year for that. So we've combined those two buckets. So this is budget neutral. There isn't anything additional in the budget that's needed. The grant over time, the forecast, and this friend is going to jump in and interrupt the superintendent's pleasure if he gets this wrong, but there's four years following it and it's anticipated the grant will continue to be funded at a level of $50,000. This is all DESI dependent, of course. So as, as every year the annual budgets are crafted and DESI funds their grants, we're always subject to that, but that's true of all grants we submit.
Do we have to reapply for the grant every year?
That's right.
So upon receipt, it's a five year anticipated acceptance of the grant, which is great. If we decide which we intend to do to apply for another Innovation Pathways grant, as it stands right now, that would be an additional potential $75,000 in year one. So we're looking to add to our Innovation Pathways opportunities and that would then, as it currently stands, then provide us with additional funding source through an additional grant.
Which could then actually continue to make that position budget neutral over time?
True.
That's, that's our hope. That's our hope.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Please.
So Laura, is what you're saying, the grant, the grant that you have now is, is anticipated for five years? And then the next one that you were talking about, does that happen at the same time as this one? Or is that starting in five years when this one is anticipated to end?
The way it's currently structured through DESI is that with each Innovation Pathway grant that you apply for, you remember how robust the process was for us to be accepted. In year one, you received $75,000 for that pathway. We submitted for two. They don't offer twice the amount. We thought it was really important to have options and we made that decision. Right now, they've indicated that if we apply for another one, that we would then have an opportunity to apply for the $75,000 for the third one. And then an additional, it's $50,000 for the remaining four years. So some districts really parcel out when they're applying to maximize the funding opportunities. So we're going to work to take advantage of it while the funding is available and, you know, all systems point to DESI and the state really supporting this direction for high schools, so.
So you can stack the grants by as you add new programs in.
Correct. And you'll, you know that in the last, if I may, in the last meeting, there was an approval for the Capital Skills Grant, which was made available to us because we had applied for and received the Innovation Pathways Grant. We have also since applied for Capital Skills and Technology Grant, which we're waiting to hear from. So there are other funding sources that become available to us because of the Innovation Pathways designation.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
I just have one last question. So if, if the school committee approves this tonight, is the hope that whoever's hired would be able to start working with the students who are already enrolled, like, in the Innovation Pathways program?
This would be, this would begin the school year, yes. So we would have to set a start date, so that's all part of the hiring process, but yes.
So just to clarify, our school committee has a protocol where we don't normally present an idea and vote on it in a single meeting, but because of the time sensitive nature of this situation, there is allowance within our practice to make those decisions, to vote in a single meeting. And that is what the superintendent is asking us to do tonight. So it's not typical. We like to allow the community to have some time to understand that this is on the horizon and that gives them a level of information to, or time to weigh in, but because we don't meet again until September, we need to vote on this tonight.
I make that clear. The other factor that pressed us to this point in time is the funding of the grant itself. We've received the award letter, you know, the notifications with that. There's a process in DESI where we get the technical awarding of the grant and that's what we've been waiting for. And we still haven't received it as of today, so again, so, but Mr. Mulcain is going to explain that when we get to the business and operations portion today, finance operations, because we can go ahead and approve the acceptance of the mountain grant. It's just the formality of it being entered into the computer by DESI hasn't been done yet. So we waited as long as we could and now we're just at that pressure point.
But you're, you're confident that the money will come in before this person?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, 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 yes.
Okay. All right, so maybe we can look for a motion and then move on.
Yeah, I move to approve the Innovation Pathways Coordinator and Communications Specialist Job Description as presented.
Drive second. Thank you, Lindsay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, fantastic. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And on to your next item of your superintendent's report.
And if, if you don't mind me requesting without objection that I move straight from this announcement into new business.
Please.
Great. So I'm going to bring up Dr. Megmail Brown to the screen. Hello, Dr. Brown, how are you today?
I'm well, thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Oh, wonderful. We can hear your voice very clearly. But I will ask the members of the committee, is the Owl, if you have a question when we get to that period, please look directly at the Owl and be very clear. And the chair has agreed that if you can't hear the question, Dr. Megmail Brown, she will re-ask the question for you. So please, don't be shy to say, can you repeat the question?
Thank you. Thanks very much. And I appreciate the accommodation to present virtually with you tonight.
Thank you. So in the meeting materials that you have tonight is the final report for the equity audit conducted this spring by Dr. Megmail Brown, along with Dr. Kimberly Henry conducting our focus group conversations. This audit is intended to guide us in adjusting our strategic work to ensure we have the policies, practices, routines, procedures and designs that afford each and every student in the school system the best opportunity for success. The audit recommendations will be considered by the NRSD Leadership Council, the NRSD Equity Team, and then the Shobur Regional School Committee, and also through their advisory groups like our dear Jay. And doubly, this report will also raise questions that are not addressed in this audit. That is to be expected. So as we keep a lens of equity on the forefront of our work in the years to come. So it's with that introduction that Dr. Megmail Brown will turn it over to you and you have control of your own slide deck, so I invite you to share your screen and you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the introduction. So this is the third presentation to the school committee. This is the final report and I designed the presentation to focus on the recommendations that I've, that I've put into, into the report. So I will go, I will go through each of those recommendations as, as the main focus of tonight's report. So just to bring us back around the definition that was used for the audit, that definition came from the National Equity Project, meaning that educational equity means that each child receives what they need to develop their full academic and social potential. On the right side of the screen, we have the guiding frameworks for the, for the audit. Just to go through those briefly, I'm not going to read each one, but it's an opportunity to critically examine policies and programs. It's an opportunity to shift thinking from what may have really been around for years through No Child Left Behind, right? That was all about closing achievement gaps, opportunity gaps, focus on the student. And that's not to say we're not focusing on the student, but it's a shift in thinking or philosophy, if you will, to equity is about developing systems to increase the district's capacity to bring about more equitable outcomes and experiences for, for students. And when I've presented to the school committee in the past, they have focused on the systems piece of the, of the work and how is it that the district is looking at systems to ensure equitable outcomes for all students. The Alliance for Resource Equity captures that this is the time, this is the time to come together, understand issues, explore next steps, capture really the nationwide effort and momentum that's occurring in the area of equity. And then also, I just, I love the last quote on this slide from Ron Hyde Fitz that says there's, he says, there's no such thing as a dysfunctional organization because every organization is perfectly aligned to achieve the results it currently gets. So if you're not happy with the results that you're getting on behalf of students, it's an opportunity to think about what needs to change in the organization to yield, yield better results. We had a set of 10 questions for the equity audit. These 10 questions came out of the Alliance for Resource Equity. There, there's a link at the bottom of the slide. There's also in the report. Again, equity begins in the classroom, so the majority of the key questions focus on the instructional form. Again, that's the relationship between the teacher, the student, in the presence of content. So again, I won't read through the 10 questions, but just to revisit those in the sense that those questions represent the framework of the, of the audit. The methodology was we used those 10 questions as a framework and engaged in an inquiry-based collaborative process to examine the district's policies, programs and practices. We did that through quantitative and qualitative data sources and we invited stakeholder voice and participation through surveys and focus groups. I had shared this slide at the first presentation to the school committee and I just want to put it here again in the final report to remind all of us that the equity audit is really the tip of the iceberg and that the long-term work of the district is really around systems, beliefs, practices and people. So if you think about institutional, you know, what policies are present and how do those impact equitable outcomes for students? What are the systems ideology or beliefs about students, beliefs about families, beliefs about teachers, beliefs about schools? Internalize what are individuals' beliefs about all of those stakeholders as well? And interpersonal, how is it that the interactions occur between and among everyone in a district? So again, the equity audit, and I think your superintendent said this is, this is, this is sort of captures a moment in time and launches the real longer term work of the What I captured in the report in terms of equity focused strength as a result of the , of the audit, and some of these we presented last time, so they may sound a bit familiar to you. Most certainly, the strategic plan, the district's strategic plan is driving the work of district planning, including the development and early implementation of systems that are designed to advance equity for all students. There's evidence of alignment with the strategic plan. You can see it in school improvement plans. You can see it in the district's teaching and learning resources and you can see it in professional development. So the, the work that the school committee did with district leadership around establishing a strategic plan is certainly paving the way, showing the blueprint for what needs, needs to happen. And you can see that the strategic plan is beginning to become realized through these different pieces of evidence that I cited. The second bullet, the systems and structures within the Department of Teaching and Learning, certainly, I can't say this, it's just a really exemplar in many ways of, of providing an equity focus and lens in all areas. There's an infrastructure emerging around curriculum assessment, the MTSS, professional development to increase inclusive and equitable practices for each and every student in the district. So again, the infrastructure is articulated for sure. Starting to see some evidence that it's emerging within these, these different areas. The third bullet, there's a strong comprehensive multi-tiered system of support. And I, I say the word articulated, right? Because it's visioned, it's articulated in all the documents. Is it yet evident in all classrooms? Not yet, but there's certainly the plan to get there if what has been articulated is executed and implemented. And finally, fourth bullet in terms of a strength, the district is demonstrating a commitment to well, student well-being through comprehensive planning in social, emotional learning and behavioral health. And again, I want to emphasize planning, right? So there's work to be done to get from planning to implementing. Areas of opportunity that were, that I've noted in the report is, the first is around the first is around developing and implementing accountability and monitoring systems. So as we talked about the strengths, is the articulation of teaching and learning systems that are evident. To what degree are those systems being realized in classrooms? For example, as you've adopted a new math curriculum, where are the accountability and monitoring practices? So that as principals walk into those classrooms where the math curriculum should be implemented, to what degree do principals and others know the degree to which the new curriculum is being implemented? And areas where teachers might need support in implementation? So things are in place. It's now time to shift to the monitoring and accountability. And I want to be careful because when I say the word accountability, sometimes that's interpreted as a very strong word. You don't intend it in this way to be strong. It's accountability means that as the district did all this in-depth work in identifying a curriculum, as we say with that example, how is it being ensured that that's the curriculum that's being enacted in the classroom? That you could use, I guess you could interchange accountability with expectations to some degree. The second area for an opportunity is consideration of the district to use positive behavior intervention and supports. PBIS is the acronym that's used. So that's often, if we think about social, emotional learning, is a way for students to develop sort of internal competencies. PBIS is a way sort of for students to respond to external expectations. SEL and PBIS, and I have referenced in the report, are two different things, if you will, two different theoretical frameworks, but they can work hand in hand. And if the district goes about researching and exploring PBIS, it may yield to more consistent and culturally responsive practices around discipline and expectations in each of your schools. The third area is intentionality on engaging families through a DEI, a diversity, equity, and inclusion lens. I'll talk about this in a later slide, around opportunities to really work with families around co-creating and co-designing. The next area is the development of belonging-supportive learning environments. We talked about this in the last presentation. Fifty-four percent of students who were surveyed in the district indicated a sense of belonging, belongingness. And so that yields a lot of work to be done where the other percentage of students did not articulate that favorable response around feeling a sense of belonging. I flagged it here for you as a critical area of need. Certainly, I know we all want all students to feel a sense of belonging in schools. There's work to be done in that area, for sure. And then finally, through the focus groups led by Dr. Henry, understanding that those who attended the focus groups, particularly representing BIHOP students and families, that their reported lived experiences in the district is one of limited representation in curriculum, staffing, extracurricular activities, and outreach. Before I get into very specific recommendations, I did want to capture there, because of the emergence of research coming out of neuroscience, the developmental sciences, learning scientists, we're getting more and more information about practices that serve all students well in schools. One of the practices is identity-safe classrooms. This is, I wrote a little bit more in the report about this. Excuse me for one second. I just want to be able to make sure I can reference it on a page. It's on page 63 of your report where I talked a little bit more in detail about identity-safe classrooms. It's coming out of research from the Learning Policy Institute. And that's a way to think about, no matter what a student's identity is, whether it's on the basis of race, ethnicity, language, income, sexual identity, disability, status, or gender, that every child in school has, is, or her, their identity affirmed, and they feel a sense of belonging in the classroom. And these four areas that are noted on the slide, again, I won't read each of them. They're in the report as well. Talk about what identity-safe classrooms look like, feel like, sound like in schools. Similarly, if we look back to belonging-supportive learning environments and thinking of the percentage of your students, so that would be 46% of students. I always like to frame things in the positive, right? Fifty-four percent of your students felt a sense of belonging, those that were surveyed. So the flip side of that, in terms of thinking about the students that didn't have that favorable response, what do those environments need to look like to be considered belonging-supportive learning environments? There are some resources in the report that you can turn to to learn a little bit more about some research best practices in those areas. But again, you'll see a common theme here, respecting each student's identity, right? So that's interconnected with an identity-safe classroom. Affirming each child's capacity to succeed with high expectations, but providing the feedback and support so each child can meet those high expectations, and recognizing a student's own agency, their voice, their contribution to the classroom, to the community at large. And finally, this is, I would say, an emerging newer idea to work more closely with students. And we talked about it a little bit in the family engagement piece, the opportunity to co-design and co-create. Here I have focused on youth-adult partnerships where faculty and staff are working together with students in an authentic relationship to co-design approaches. And certainly, hearing from students through surveys and focus groups is important and a good first step, working more closely with them to do co-design and to do this work at the classroom level. You'll see here in the graph, this is from the National Equity Project. This would be partnerships between a teacher and a student in the classroom around this notion, around this concept at the school level and at the system level. Your students have, as many students do, have a lot to say about, around informing the district's practices and policies. And the more that we can pull students in to co-create and co-design what school looks like, I think that's a good intersection with also creating a sense of belonging. Here, I'm going to get into the specific recommendations. And the way that I have created the slide is to take a section of the report, so in this case, it's school committee policies and programs. In red, you'll see that's the key question from the 10 questions that I showed before. And then, I'll go through each bullet, but it's in response to the question. So, "Does the district have specific policy, mission, and vision regarding educational equity?" For initiatee, by and large, yes. There's a lot of evidence around that. Your school committee goals specifically address equity in two of your seven stated goals. You adopted a diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging statement in December. You established the DRJ. And again, the strategic plan specifically, a strategic objective around culture and belonging. So the answer to that question, by and large, yes. Are there, I could make it, and I have made just sort of minor tweaks to that to enhance what you're already doing. And one would be to consider adopting a definition of equity to provide clarity to all. I bet if we asked every person in the room, "What's your definition of equity?", we'd probably get several different responses. So if the school committee, and I think we heard some of this from open responses in the faculty and staff survey, if the school committee could identify for the district stakeholders what you mean by equity, I think that would help with alignments in many ways. Mass Association of School Committees has policy JPD around educational equity. You have a policy around it. This just makes it an explicit focus on educational equity, including, which you already have, equity practices in the district's strategic plan. And then finally, I included a link to the policy equity analysis tool that just gives you a tool, if you will, to examine policies and procedures with a specific focus on educational equity as you're adopting new policies or practices. The next area I wanted to focus in on is around teaching and learning question. Does each student have access to high-quality and culturally relevant curriculum and instruction materials? As I said in the beginning, there's a vision for learning. It's clearly articulated. There are curriculum guides and maps for all grade levels and content areas, noting some are under revision. And the district is engaged in a review cycle that's moving toward thoughtful adoption of high-quality instructional materials. In the report, I gave the example of the adoption of the mathematics curriculum. The next piece around strategic plan initiatives is to what degree is the strategic plan supporting that question? Does each student have access, right? So there are three initiatives that are in service of that question. So that's all to say, district has identified it as an area to be of need and that will be worked on. The recommendations in the report around this key question is to is to focus in on the disproportionality that's occurring at the high school. We talked about that previously, that there's disproportionality among and within high school courses. I want to just reiterate again, I don't view that as a high school issue. There is something occurring in the organization and the system that by the time students get to high school, those are the options for them, that those course enrollments, that course enrollment data, I would submit to you, is really a result of policies, and I don't mean school committee policy, policies and practices that may be occurring that are leading to those kinds of options for students and creating that disproportionality by the time that they get to high school. So that needs to really be unpacked by the district to figure out what are the root causes that it's creating disproportionality at the high school, and an action plan so that all students have the opportunity to access and succeed in rigorous coursework. Another recommendation is, again, to continue to implement the district's curriculum review cycle. You've got that, the way that it's articulated and the way that it occurred for math is, would be considered a best practice in terms of the adoption processes. Provides support and flexibility for teachers to select instructional materials. Again, to, not to replace the curriculum, right? But in the areas that teachers have flexibility to incorporate racial, cultural, linguistic backgrounds for their students. Again, that's part of creating that identity-safe classroom, that students can see themselves in the classroom, but that students, when we talk about windows into other experiences and perspectives. And then finally, that the educator evaluation system, and when I say system, superintendent, district leaders, principals, and faculty, are there ways that the educator evaluation system and professional development can support student access to high-quality and culturally relevant curriculum and instruction materials? Some of the open response that we heard from the teacher survey was a bit of a wondering, I suppose, around when professional development is optional. And there's much to be said about the need for it to be optional, but is everybody getting the type of professional development that's critical and necessary in order to create equitable outcomes for each and every student in the district? The second question in teaching and learning is, does each student have access to teaching practices that are engaging, culturally relevant, standards-aligned? You'll notice in this slide, I didn't capture a strategic objective or initiative from the strategic plan because I didn't see there was an alignment from this question to the strategic plan. So that's something the district may want to think about a little bit more in terms of focus on teaching practices, particularly around the culturally relevant piece. We use the equity learning blocks in DESI's culturally responsive look force when we did the learning walks in February. So my recommendation would be to continue to use those equity learning walks with school and district leaders so you can collect some data on progress towards the culturally responsive look force. So when we talk about accountability and monitoring, this would be a tool to do that kind of work. The district may want to think about having an equity imperative in each school improvement plan. So for each school, what specific area of equity are they working on? And this is why I think the school committee having a definition of equity would help this alignment in a school improvement plan. So to name a specific area of equity that each school is working on in addition to how it's aligned with the strategic plan. Again, the educator evaluation system, how can the establishment, every educator needs a student learning goal and a professional practice goal? How are those goals aligning with the district's strategic plan specifically around this first objective in the area of curriculum, instructional, and assessment practices? And finally, as I mentioned on the previous slide, considering ways that all educators can participate in professional development in response to supporting culturally responsive practices. And then the remaining area in teaching and learning, does each student who needs more high-quality instructional time receive it? Yes, this is very well articulated through the Department of Teaching and Learning in the district. There's a great multi-tiered system of support handbook that provides a vision, the framework. The structure of PLCs exists in schools so that educators have an opportunity to review student data and make determinations around who needs targeted intervention, which students need additional support. The district was able to put what I need now blocks in the master schedule across every school, every grade level. So yes, it also aligns with the district's strategic plan initiative. And so I have two recommendations, and that continue to fully develop and implement the vision of MTSS, both in academics and social, emotional learning across the district in all schools, particularly thinking about how that, what MTSS looks like at the high school level. The next section of the report is devoted to positive and inviting school climate. Does each student have access to effective social, emotional learning opportunities? Again, it's articulated as a strategic initiative, particularly at the kindergarten through fifth-grade level. The district is identifying that there is more work to be done to create learning environments that foster social, emotional growth and learning opportunities. So again, it's a matter of, the vision is there, it's articulated in the strategic plan, it's articulated in other areas of the district. The district needs to move from the articulation and vision to the full implementation of it in every classroom. In the recommendations in the report, I provided the link to Castle's rubric, which is, I think, a very helpful tool to assess where each school is in terms of their practices and how, and some recommendations around how you can scale up SEL in schools. The next question is, does each student have positive relationships with staff and other students? Here I capture the 54% of students that I've mentioned already. Themes from student focus groups indicate students of color express feeling isolated or alienated due to being in the minority, experiencing difficulties in forming connections with peers, teachers, and staff who may not understand their cultural backgrounds or experience yet. And these are your students' voices that came out of the focus groups. The Youth Risk Behavior Survey, overall, 75% of students feel, report feeling safe at school. And the district publishes a comprehensive positive climate plan for safety-supported learning environments. There is a strategic plan objective around this work. Three recommendations, continue to support your faculty and staff to develop positive relationships with students. There's some links in the report around some practices that encourage that. Elevate your students' voice and agency. Again, there's a resource here for strategies to do that, again, to pull in that student voice, not only to hear their experiences, but to think about ways to co-design and co-create with them. And then finally, collect and review data on student relationships and sense of belonging. You really want to monitor that 54%, what is that looking like over time? What trends and patterns are you noticing with that? Disaggregating the data so you have a good sense of, in particular, which students are feeling that sense of belonging and where there's more work to be done. The next area is, does each student experience a safe school with transparent culturally sensitive and consistent expectations and discipline policies? So again, students in the focus groups note improvement in culturally sensitive expectations and practices within school, this particular around faith-based practice that was highlighted. The discipline rates in the district do social disproportionality for male students, students with disabilities, and African-American, Black students. Students and speakers, student speakers in focus groups identify racial slurs as a primary area needing attention in their schools. This is captured in the report with some specific quotes, anonymous quotes, from students who feel like one racial slur is made, it's not addressed either consistently or at all or to the degree that it would not happen, not happen again. There wasn't a strategic plan initiative around that, no judgment there, it's just I just wanted to draw attention to where I saw alignment with the strategic plan to the key question and where there wasn't. Recommendations around this, provide faculty and staff with tools and strategies to address hate speech and microaggressions. I have some resources in there. And I'm going to pause there for just a moment because in the report, I highlighted this as an opening that I would strongly encourage district leadership to do some root cause analysis before employing a recommendation. The recommendations are, you know, it would make sense that teachers would need some additional tools and strategies, right? But maybe that's not the root cause, maybe it's something else. And you will only know if that's the highest leverage recommendation, because that will make a difference. If you can go through a root cause analysis to determine, is that the case, that teachers need additional tools or strategies? Or is something else going on in terms of, in this example, why racial slurs are not getting addressed in a way that matters to students? The next area where I talked about PBIS, again, to see, to use that tool that's in the field guide that's linked here, to review the culturally responsive practices, to see what's, you know, what's in place in schools, school by school, and ways to employ PBIS practices to enhance equity in school discipline. And then finally, in this area, student handbooks, right, are often the first point of contact with families in many ways. And it's an opportunity, I think, for the school committee and district leadership and school leadership to convey your commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, to convey culturally affirming and identity-safe messages in those handbooks. And to also ensure that the handbooks are specifically translated, not that, not to put the responsiveness on the parent to Google Translate a handbook, but that it's actually available in languages that are, you know, that you have in the district. Finally, in the area of shifting to family engagement, rather, the key question was, does each student attend a school that actively and meaningfully engages families? What I found is that school principals are responsible for fostering homeschool partnerships. School improvement plans align the district's strategic objective on homeschool relationships. The vast majority of parents and caregivers who were surveyed said they feel very welcome at their child's school. 53% of the parents surveyed indicated they understand how well their child is doing socially at school, and that's that social-emotional learning piece. So that's an area, I think, you know, in terms of getting that percentage to increase so that more parents can understand how their child is doing social-emotional at school. And families attending focus groups provided important themes that are captured in the report, again, on their experiences, and I talked about that early on tonight. There is a strategic plan objective for family engagement. And then the recommendations that I have here are three. Provide information for families in their home languages and using multiple communication methods about the courses their child should be taking to prepare for college and different career options, right? That goes back to thinking about what exists in the organization or in the district that is leading to disproportionality at the high school. We want to be sure that parents have a full understanding of what coursework their child should be in so that they are well-prepared for college and different career options. The second recommendation is to ensure school improvement plans, not only in addition, I would say, in addition to focusing on communication strategies, which is much of what's in the school improvement plans, but in what ways are they seeking to engage with families through a lens of diversity, equity, and inclusion? And finally, DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, has a ton of tools on family engagement that I've linked in the report that you may find useful. The remaining area, the final section of the report, is devoted to faculty and leadership in terms of, does the teacher and leadership workforce reflect student diversity? And do teachers and staff have a sense of belonging? Because that's important as well. So approximately 20% of students identify students of color, and the staffing data indicates that 97% of staff are white. The district has a teacher recruitment plan that articulates and operationalizes the district's desire to diversify the workforce. So again, the vision is there, the plan is there in terms of steps that the district wants to take to diversify the workforce. Faculty and staff response report highly favorable responses when prompted about their sense of belonging. Just want to sort of caveat here for me is that we had a 30% overall response rate to the faculty and staff survey. May need a bit more data to draw any sort of conclusions around, is that representative of all faculty and staff in the district? There's a strategic plan initiative around recruiting, hiring, retaining a diverse staff that mirrors the educational vision. So there are four recommendations here. DESI has a guidebook that has a number of strategies. The district's teacher recruitment plan has most of those strategies. If anyone just look at the guidebook to see if there are any others worth including in your teacher recruitment plan. There are a couple of resources here around retention, teacher retention, and teacher sense of belonging. As we tend to student well-being and belonging, I think it's equally important that we tend to teacher and faculty well-being and sense of belonging as well. So in conclusion, thanks for bearing with me. It's been a long presentation. Recommended next steps for the school committee with the leadership team, school teams have captured here, again, how do you define educational equity? There's a lot of recommendations here, right? So how will you prioritize? What do you consider the most promising recommendations that fit your community's unique context? What areas need further exploration and inquiry? Again, I'll just put a plug in for doing some root cause analysis around some of the findings and recommendations because you want to be sure that those recommendations, that the strategy that you employ, right, is the highest leverage strategy and you're best thinking about that. And then how do you continue to include the many voices of your community in this very important work? Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Mayo Brown. I really appreciate that very comprehensive explanation. And Kirk, at this point, would you like to respond and then maybe even let the committee ask some questions?
Yeah, absolutely. I personally want to thank Dr. Mayo Brown for doing such a thorough job on this investigation. I know, having experienced the process with her, we've talked as a leadership team of how we're going to continue some of the practices, particularly the equity blocks is one example of that, and using the DESI frameworks to guide us in that way. So we're already working on some of those initiatives. And later this evening, you're going to hear from Mr. Bates on our elementary and middle school schedules to further help us align this work that we're going to do that can then transfer to this. I think the important takeaway from this, that I've had many conversations with Dr. Mayo Brown about, and that we've talked about with the school committee, is that we're year two of five, concluding year two of five of our strategic work. And we've spent the last two years really building the groundwork and the infrastructure of what is necessary for us to go deep, deep into understanding equity issues and examples of where we need to be better. And now we're in that transition time of needing to employ those practices in the day-to-day classrooms. And so through the infrastructure that we've been able to build, I believe we've cultivated the ground now, we're ready to germinate those seeds and start growing and doing that work. So I want to thank Dr. Mayo Brown for guiding us through this process. As I know, Dr. Mayo Brown, even though she's concluding with her report tonight, she knows perfectly well that she's never off the hook with me, and we'll be engaging in the future in this work through this block.
Great, thanks Kirk. Committee members, this is your chance to share anything that you're thinking or maybe ask questions or anything you wanted to put on the table. Go ahead.
You can start off. I just want to express, I guess, gratitude that the committee voted in favor of this budget line item. I think the amount of information that we got through this process is priceless, actually, and worth a lot more than what we, we got more out of it than what we spent to get it. That's my feeling. I hope as a school committee that we can use our workshop to take a lot of these recommendations and help us form goals around the work we do next year and that we kind of build on all of the good work that has been done. I was really happy to see so many recommendations related to family engagement and what we can do to start bridging the gap between the vision and the reality. So I don't really have any questions, I just wanted to put that on the record that I'm, you know, I think there's so much information in here that we can use in the school committee to guide our work. So thank you.
Dr. Mayo Brown, I hope you heard all of that.
I did, thank you very much, thank you.
Very good. Jackie's next.
I just, sometimes when we do this work, it can feel really overwhelming, and so I just wanted to recognize that this is an exceptionally comprehensive list of recommendations, but I'm really excited. I think there's a lot of opportunity and really some strategic things that were happening this year that really align well with those recommendations. So thank you. And I would echo what Amy said, like, there's a lot that we need to dig into, and the workshop would be a really great time to start talking about that.
Thank you.
And just a point of clarification, if some of the items, we are met with a paywall or access issues, is there a way that we could get those materials?
Oh, absolutely. So I definitely check my links, so it must be, but I'm, yeah, Kirk, if you could let me know, I certainly provide those, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
I will also say that I also feel a little overwhelmed, not necessarily by what Nishoba is looking to do, but what public schools are being asked to do. I think that there is so much opportunity here, but it's also, it does feel overwhelming. The thing that I, two things that I will say. Thing one, and this may be a question. It started out with you talking about the school committee defining equity, which I think is a really worthwhile process. I wonder your thoughts, or even Kirk's thoughts, Laura's thoughts, Ron's thoughts, how or should a school committee get ahead of a school district on defining that? How should that process best look?
Yeah, I'll answer that question, Madam Chair. As you know, we've been working with Dr. Kalise Warne in the Professional Development Series as a Leadership Council team and also our Faculty Council team this year. And a major element of that work that we're now walking into is developing that definition of equity. And so I think we need to be partnering along with that. Dr. Warne is observing this meeting tonight, and we have a follow-up call with her in the next week or two to go over the equity audit report with her so that we can determine those steps. So I would like to have the opportunity to do that work with Dr. Warne and then come back to you as a chair, and we can see how we would advance that work as a committee together.
Yeah, and I think that pointing toward the pieces about engaging with families and also engaging with students, you know, how can the entire community come to a shared definition? I don't think it should just be the educators or school committee members who are a part of that. I think that the kids need to be a part of that because, as you mentioned, one of the things that just keeps standing up to me is the racial slur piece.
Yep.
And it is just so prevalent in our society at large. And so bringing the kids into that conversation to help them work that out is so powerful. And so engaging the kids, I think, is a really important piece of that, too. And I think that's part of, that's a big thing we're trying to do now as well.
One of the important things, I think I'm taking, making note of that because I absolutely agree with you. I think one of the things that this report surfaced for us, that we've talked about it, I know we've had conversations in our Dear J meetings about this, we have had conversations about this, and it's plopped up in other areas that we've studied. And that is engaging with our students in ways to where their voices are not just heard, but they can see, feel, touch, taste, and understand the efforts we're making to help them, no matter what the issue is. And whether it's an issue of gender, race, intellectual disability, we need to engage our students in that way. So we're going to be looking for ways, and we're going to be working as a leadership council to build that work into our schools. I know that part of the plan we have right now is that our district equity team has been having this training, we're building sort of our PD muscles around DEI this year, we're getting stronger and stronger. And when their series completes the end of the fall next year, November-ish if I recall the date, those groups of leaders are then going to be building those teams at the school level. So we'll have that element at the school level, and with that, we want to see where the student engagement pieces are as well. So I think that, we've got several data points that point to us that we need to really raise those voices, and even as a school committee, we began that journey engaging with our STUCO at the high school this year, and we're formalizing some of those structures so that our committee is getting some of that information from students as well.
Yeah, and I think including families as well because, I mean, the kids spend six hours of their day in the school, and the rest of those hours are amongst their friends and family. So how can we build capacity in our community outside of the school to create the proper practice in them that they bring into the school?
Can I just go on to that, this, about the kids a little bit and engaging the students?
Ms. Park, if you don't mind, would you look right down? Just as loudly as you can.
I just want to add on a thought to that about engaging the students, not only what we teach the students, but what we learn from them, what they can teach us. Because every time I have talked to any of the students that I have run across, I am continually amazed by their level of understanding and their level of insight if we just sit down and listen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ms. Park, I'm so glad you brought that up. In the 11th grade civic action projects, they look to design a question and ask a question of how they can have an impact in their community civically. And one of those juniors reached out directly to me, and it was specifically around building connections and a sense of belonging between students, and was illustrating some concerns of where it, we talked about some of the things, like we heard some things about targeted like we heard some things about targeted language, but this particular student even approached just this idea of apathy as being a big concern, that relationally people being connected and in that way feeling sort of responsible to each other is something that's needed. And I think that that dovetails into some of the recommendations that we're seeing in this report.
Any other comments? All right, well, Dr. Mayo Brown, again, thank you so much for this work. As Kirk said earlier, this is probably not the last you will see of us.
It's been such a pleasure to work with Kirk and his team and all of you. And thank you for your commitment to the work that you're doing. You've got so much in place. It's really been a joy to see the efforts and the commitment that the committee and district leadership that you're all taking in this, in this work. So thank you for being, letting me be a part of it.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Hi, everybody. We're going to move on to our next item on the agenda, but before we do that, I wonder if I could just, I should bear with me. Alita, can we turn the air conditioner back on?
It's like a middle hour.
Oh, man, this old building, we love it, but. Thank you, Alita, for tending to all of our needs. Okay, so everybody, our next item on the agenda is our Dear J end of year presentation. And they are going to share with us, they've been up here and we are so fortunate to have those members of Dear J here with us in the gallery. So I know that the table might feel small in the front, but please push some chairs up and join us here. I introduce to you all Dear J. And if you guys feel free to just introduce yourselves to the committee.
Thank you so much for having us.
Yeah, so we're, it's really, we appreciate you inviting us here tonight and giving the time to listen to the audit report, to engaging in this work and to investing in the future of the work and the conversations. I'm Lori Burnett and I am also a parent of a senior who's graduating and it is my eldest. So I think I've been in the district since a long time, 2005 or something. So I'm going to be sad to go, but it's wonderful to see all this, this future.
Thank you, Lori. My name is Lindsay Shavz. I'm a co-chair with Lori, a SOU resident and a parent of three multi-ethnic, multiracial children, one of which is in the district, two of who will eventually be in the district.
And I'm Kelly Lawler. I'm a mother of two children in the district. I've also been an educator for 15 years and I've been serving on the committee with these lovely ladies since 2021. So we've been around supporting this whole committee for a while.
All right, so thank you, guys. We look forward to your presentation. So you can take it away.
Great, we're going to jump right into our vision.
Kelly.
Yes, yes. And we also just want to apologize, not all of our members could make it. We do our best that we can to reach out to our community and to bring in as many diverse experiences and perspectives and identities onto our committee. So our vision is to ensure that we have a district where students of all races, ethnicities, sexual orientations, gender identities, religious affiliations, neurotypes, physical abilities, nationalities, incomes, languages spoken, and bodies belong and are able to realize their full potential as active contributors to their community. We know that we all care about all of the needs of all of our learners. That's a really important word there. And that's kind of just the vision that we have for our committee and how we best support the school committee. And that leads us right into our mission. So our mission is to continually support. And so we're really happy to see the equity audit and to hear from Dr. Mayo Brown. And we really see our work moving forward to have really, you know, a pathway that we can kind of follow and to help support this school committee. We want to support, educate the school committee, the school district in its work to ensure that we are prioritizing diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging and that there are embedded practices within our, our school district and our community.
Battery issue. It's okay, though.
Is this the owl?
No. It's a computer.
We put the owl to bed.
Well, as we're waiting, we do have two, so we were a committee of five, we kind of morphed over the course of the year, but by the end of the year, we were a committee of five. And Kathy Befels, who's unable to be here tonight because she, she is also in education and is at her school's end graduation tonight. So she was unable to make it. And Elizabeth Fendler, who also is able to make it due to school commitments. So we're sorry to miss them. Kathy might step in as we come and she'll, as we discuss, so that's, you see her, that's, yes.
So with our work, we try to kind of put these four focuses at the forefront of what we do. And a lot of this was spoken tonight by Dr. Mayo Brown in the equity audit and report that she gave. We want to make sure that we have our equitable principles, that we're challenging bias because we know that we all have implicit bias. We want to make sure that we're promoting intersectionality and that we're having conversations around identity. We want to make sure that our students, our community are comfortable with these conversations so that we can move forward because we know that this is one way to close those achievement gaps that Dr. Mayo Brown was discussing. We seek guidance from our growing and diverse community and we want to really make some impactful change to improve our students' lives here in our school district. And all of this aligns with our district objectives. So we want to make sure that the advisement and the recommendations that we provide per you are based on data, are based on practices that other schools do. You have a lot of educators here with a lot of years of experience and this is research that, that we do a lot of work in. So that's what we try to bring to the committee with, with our work.
And so that brings us to sort of our four largest activities we spent our time on this year. The first of, someone's going to provide a general overview of them and then we'll provide a little more detail following. The first was our Dear J guiding document, which really was one of the initial asks that you all asked us to do was kind of to create who and what we should be. The next was supporting the equity audit process recommendations. And then we have spent significant time on our decision-making tool, which is also alluded to in the, in Dr. Mayo Brown's report. And then we also, some other activities we engaged in were supporting our summer retreat last year, supporting around support around the equity statement, student participation, and ongoing sort of ways we can improve our communication with you all. Which leads us to the next one. So our Dear J guiding document, there is a link in, on the actual slides, I think, and on our webpage. But we really spent a lot of time trying to figure this out because one of our goals and missions and our values is inclusion and being open to participation and ensuring that we are, it isn't just our voices, but we are listening to and bringing in voices from the community. And at the same time, we had to meet open meeting law and, and fall within guidelines of the school committee's advisory. So we spent significant time sort of researching what other districts, what other models are out there, looking at open meeting law and sort of trying to determine how could we structure ourselves so that we have quorum, we meet open meeting law, we have, and we are able to also bring in voices from the community. And so what we landed on is this visual right here. We have the advisory committee, which is the voting group of people that has, that we have quorum. We came up in the document, I won't go in here now, but wanted to make sure anyone, we are open to anyone participating in that should they want. So it's very easy to become a member. And all of our meetings are always open to the public at any point. They're also very aware that not everybody gives that commitment. It's a, it's a big commitment to meet twice monthly, which is what we often did. And some people also might be just interested in a particular topic. So the working group model was a way to allow anyone to be able to participate on a specific topic and provide us with information, guidance, advice, perspective. And that, so those working group topics would then come forward, they could meet at any point, but would bring to the advisory committee their thoughts and recommendations. And then the community council really was, we also want to make sure our work is grounded in best practice and learning from, from locally, regionally, and nationally, and even internationally. So how are we bringing in experts from different spaces? I'm using the term expert very broadly, but how are we bringing these in? So we, when we are bringing our recommendations to you and that we are, you know, looking at all different, at it from all different angles. So that's sort of a summary of our guiding document. There's more details, we had it sort of broken down by roles as well, for clarity.
All right. And actually, the link to the guiding doc, sorry, Kelly, is on slide seven. There's a hate comment.
Yes, so what we did with our equity audit recommendations, many of us knew and had done research and had known from experience as educators within our districts that equity audits can be, can provide so much information to school districts to identify gaps in achievement and to identify different disparities, right? And so we knew that an equity audit was something that could help and could benefit Neshoba Regional School District. So that was something that, that we definitely recommended and within the past four years that we've been working with you. And then this year, for our equity audit recommendations, we met with the consultants through the equity audit process. You know, and we just wanted to make sure that they were surveying a wide spectrum of people within our schools. We wanted to make, we wanted to ask questions about how they were going to bring enough people from different diverse populations in our focus groups. We wanted to ask, you know, what are those identify and look for's that they were going to do in their walkthroughs? And what kind of data points were they going to be using to create their report? So we were just asking those questions that all of you were asking as well. But it was nice for us to meet with Dr. Mayo Brown, to share suggestions that we had had. And we were also able to attend these focus group meetings and to help get the word out for the school committee that these were happening. So that was something that we were happy to be a part of. You know, we feel like we're really privileged, but we know that this work takes a lot of responsibility as well.
Great. And that leads us to our decision-making tool, which is something that we have been discussing for the last few years, really thinking about how can we best support as an advisory to the school committee? So we heard it here tonight, it feels overwhelming, right? And for, from our perspective, where is this center? Where is this work centered so that it doesn't feel overwhelming, but part of the way that we operate and part of everything that we do? So we really came to this discussion several years ago around a decision-making, decision-making tool that the school committee could use and/or any other group in the district hopefully at some point could utilize when looking at policies, when looking at budgeting. When, when you're making those decisions, how can we use a tool? And I know May, May Brown actually linked in a tool that we had not seen. We have kind of created a list of tools that we have been researching from UVA, Clark University, Harvard Chan School of Public Health, et cetera, and looking at what is common among these tools and what could we extract? That would be a tool that your subcommittees could use when making decisions so that we know who's impacted by this policy change that we're making? How does it impact them? Where were their voices at the table during this decision, et cetera? So that it's almost like a check and balance of our decisions as we're in the process of making them. So that is some of the work that we've done. We have not finalized or put forward a decision-making tool. We have a list of probably nine thus far and we just got a new recommendation tonight, which we're excited to see. But really thinking about how we can actualize this in your subcommittee work is part of what we envision moving forward as well. But we have done some of that work currently. And then moving on to our advisory. So as Lori mentioned previously, last summer, some of you, I think, or all of you, it was this group, most of you, joined during your summer retreat and we worked with Leah and Sharon, I think it was with you at that point, right? To think about some artifacts that would be useful to take a look at as you crafted and thought about a DEIB statement. So we worked with both of you at that time to suggest some things and think about what that process would look like for your summer retreat. I know all of that worked in definitely during the summer retreat, but we then looped back with Leah and with our new representative, Jackie, thank you, to really think about what are, what's the essence, what's the important piece of this statement that you all committed to in your work so that all of our work is centered and grounded around equity for all students, no matter what margin-wise group they are part of. And really, the last chunk of our time this year was in visioning and thinking about how do we continue to partner really closely with you all and how do we support you based on work that we've done and/or tapping into other experts, if you will, in the field or other advisory teams or working groups that are interested in particular topics? And that's really what we're, we'll talk about a little bit in a second, but what we hope to do moving forward to. But we did have those conversations with Leah and Jackie and our whole, whole, my whole network. Which brings me into the focus for next year, a lot of which was highlighted, it's really exciting to me, to be honest, to see the equity audit because a lot of what was mentioned are things that we've been discussing and either put forward already and/or willing to support in any capacity that we can. So the equity being one, we would love to have the opportunity to think about how do we use this information that we receive because yes, it may feel overwhelming and where do we start? Where's the starting point? What's our short-term goals, our long-term goals and kind of visioning for the district, not just next year, but long-term? Community outreach is just kind of at the center of what we try to do. And kudos to my teammates who spend many of their own volunteer hours reaching out to people to, to hear their voices and to bring it, even if they can't come to that meeting, to bring it forth as a voice that is part of the community. And we want to ensure that it's not just our voices at the table, but that we represent a larger community and their voices. And we've done that, I think, well in our new organizational structure. Curriculum and PD, I was really excited to hear in the equity audit as well. We wholeheartedly are hoping, agree that hopefully this would not be optional PD, but rather professional development that is part of who you are as a faculty member and a staff member at, in Neshoba. So whether that is for new hires, I'm currently working with a group of new hires in my district, whether it's part of your contract, whether it's not, but rather it's not optional, it's just this is our fabric, this is what we do, right? And how do we do it? So that was really exciting and hopefully work that we can move forward with, moving forward. Decision-making tool, I've already really explained, whether it's something that we bring forward as a final product and/or all of our recommendations of tools that we've researched and reached out, we've reached out to some of those partners directly to get more information. We want to continue to partner in that realm and think it would unite all the subcommittees, if you will, in our decision making. Calendar and handbooks are things that, calendar, we have made recommendations in the past, but we hope to continue to attain some sort of, you know, inclusive, inclusivity within the calendar to represent all of our, all of our population. And I know handbooks has brought up, been brought up in the past and that's a large task, but how can we support to ensure that policies are supporting all of our students and written in a way that is inclusive? And that last piece, as I mentioned, this is kind of a large shift, really thinking about intentionally, we've done a lot of work internally and we try to kind of, we've been trying to find our way in and thinking about how we can best support. And that's really what we're here to do. We're all parents, educators who are willing and committed to this work, both here in Neshoba and all of us do work externally from Neshoba and it's really near and dear to our hearts. And we And we want to be sure that we are seen as an ally and as a support. And whatever we need to do, to do that, to be advisors, the best advisors we can be, we want to know from you what it is that we need to do to support you and be able to have that conversation, that reciprocal conversation.
So our question is, you know, please just reach out to us if you meet us at a meeting, if you need us at a summer workshop, if you have an idea for a community event. These are all things that we have experience in doing and just let us know what you need because we're here to support the school committee. Do we have one more slide or is that it? Oh, that's it, okay.
Any questions?
So we are, I think Dr. Meg Mayo Brown said this in the equity audit multiple times, that we are very unique in that we have this really amazing support system in Dear J. It has been building for years and it's really coming into fruition right now. I hope you guys agree that we now have this kind of institutionalized structure that we can lean on and we're super grateful to all of the work that you guys have put in for years. This presentation is really the culmination of all of that hard work, all of those hours. Not only you, but a larger team.
Yes, absolutely.
Making you guys look really amazing. So thank you so much for that. For the committee's purpose, just so that you guys know, Dear J is not, it's not a standing subcommittee, it's an advisory committee, just like we have multiple advisory committees. These committees are designed to provide us with help as we move along the way on a particular subject. And so I would recommend that we continue to keep Dear J as an advisory committee for the Shoba Regional School Committee. And if I could just poll the committee on that, do we all agree that, can I get a thumbs up if you all agree with that? So later in the agenda, I'm going to ask you to appoint next year's group, two of, both Lindsay and, well.
All three, I think all three, which, but. We are losing our chair, so we, we will, we'll talk more about that, but Lori still wants to be involved.
Yes.
Yeah, four members who are going to continue to help and put their names forward. But I would just like to call out Lori Burnett for a moment because she has been the lead on this committee for so many years. And she is a champion for the Shoba Public Schools and for equity in those schools. And so if I could just give her a round of applause.
Lori's friends and this hour is reaching out to the folks who can't attend our meetings to hear what it is that they want to bring forward. So really that is work that we are very thankful for.
Yeah, so I'm sad to say that Lori, I was trying to get Lori to say she'd stay, but.
Absolutely.
I don't think she is going to, and I don't blame her, she's off to big and better perhaps.
I'm definitely with the working groups and guests, so I will say in some way, but not as voting member, because I think that should be for, be for parents, but there's other ways. But I am also just appreciative of the district because I have been a parent here for a long time and I'm, you know, grateful for what is provided for my student, my students. So thank you. And I'll be sad to be leaving.
No, but I'm glad that you'll stay with the work and kind of come visit us here and there. But later in the meeting, you guys are going to see that we'll ask for the new membership to be appointed to this advisory, so that's to come. Do you, before I say, I know you guys have been up there for a while, I'm sorry to keep you on the hook, but any questions or comments, anything that you would like to say to Dear J?
I have a question. On one of your slides, you had put something about aligning your work with the NRSC advisory structure and the open meeting law. So why is it that your advisory committee is subject to the open meeting law as opposed to CPAC, which is not? What distinguishes your work from CPAC that compels you to comply with the open meeting law, if you know?
That's a good question. We, I mean, we've, that's what we've been, our understanding is that we are different than CPAC, so we do, but.
Yeah, Kirk, Kirk is dying to jump in.
CPAC is called out statutory through national law.
Right.
And it's specific to that. The other advisories are pure constructions of the school committee. So when the school committee develops an advisory council, any advisory council that they develop and structure is subject to those open meeting law requirements. And sort of an arm of the school committee.
And in terms of the structure and realignment, it's important to note that there is a lot of information in our policies that identify that we have to appoint members, how often they serve, what are the roles and responsibilities. And we do not delineate or designate that for CPAC either. So it's, it is very separate.
Interesting, fun fact. Any other questions or? All right, so this work will continue at the workshop, everyone. So all of what you guys have just presented, thank you Kelly, thank you Lindsay, thank you Lori. The work continues and we will definitely be in touch as we go forward.
Thank you.
All right, so guys, on to our next item on the agenda, and that is our CPAC presentation. And I'm very happy to welcome CPAC Chair, and maybe you can just give us a little bit of an introduction to, to the committee.
Sure. Hello, everybody.
Hello.
So I'm Pam Buggin, I'm from Bolton. I have three children, one has graduated from the district. I have two other children, one's a junior at the high school and the other one is a seventh grader at, here at Florence area. So I am the chair of the CPAC. Our CPAC was pretty quiet this year, which is actually, I think, a good sign. But, so I just came today to kind of give a recap on the year. So we started off the year with just three board members, myself as the chair, Caitlin Smith, who's the Stowe PTO liaison. And in September, we voted in Charlotte Hickson as the Lancaster PTO liaison. And that's all we've had for the whole year. So it's been a small group, but we've met regularly. We ended last year, because our, our elections are in April, so that's who we had last week, who voted in last year. And then we voted in again this year, it's the same, the same three people for now. So we're hoping to, you know, gather some new members, but for now, we're, we're working with the same, the same three people. We ended last year with an ice cream social at Kimball's in Lancaster, which was well-attended and enjoyed by everybody. Myself, the chair, and the Stowe PTO liaison had our first meeting with the interim director, Yumei Yao, on August 30th of last summer. We held our first business meeting on September 14th. And then on October 26th, we had a virtual meet and greet with the interim director. We actually, people submitted questions ahead of time and then Ms. Yao actually graciously actually welcomed questions at the meeting as well. And that went really well, that was really well-attended and it was virtual. Everything's been virtual. I'm so amazed to see people in person. I'm hoping we can have CPAC meetings in person next year. This would be great. So the CPAC was invited and did participate in the hiring process of the Director of Student Services. We were really happy to be, to have a seat at the table. And we, we participated by gathering questions from parents and submitting them to the district. We participated in the panel of interviews of the top candidates and then also in the candidate forum of the finalists. We're very happy to be a part of that and we thank you. In February, the CPAC hosted a virtual presentation on evaluation and eligibility, which was put on by the Federation. And that was well-attended as well, and Yumei Yao actually came to that meeting. She attended several of our meetings throughout the year, which was, which was nice. In March, we had Laura Friend join our business meeting to discuss the Student Opportunity Act Plan. That was a good meeting too. That went, it was a long meeting, you know, because everybody was really engaged in, in learning about that. And then there were some things that we had discussed last year to, that with the school committee and also with superintendent. One of them was reviewing some of the district policy manuals and giving feedback and input, which we did. And it, and there was just actually one little like typo thing that, that we picked up on that then got clarified, but other than that, everything looked good. And then, like I said, our annual elections were in April, the three board members that were there were re-elected. We regularly met with the interim director throughout the year and found her to be responsive with an eye for problem-solving and building a working relationship between the district and parents. The CPAC is grateful to Yumei for helping to build a more positive climate in the district for students and families. We appreciate all that she contributed over the past year and wish her well. The CPAC did work on a new brochure, the parent handbook, and a needs assessment survey throughout the year. There's still a draft and work in progress, works in progress. Given that there's going to be a new director entering the district very soon, we decided as a CPAC that we would hold off, we would hold the, hold the draft and, and work on it with the new director as she comes in, rather than coming up with something and then have to. So we have a lot of things that we're, we're looking forward to the new director coming in. Our goal for the next year is to continue our efforts in supporting a collaborative relationship between the district and parents on behalf of students with special education needs. We hope to do this through supporting better communication between the district and parents, as well as providing presentations to help educate parents on the special education process. And we hope to attract more board members and more parent engagement with CPAC and hope that the district will support this effort through the team chairs and special educators who work directly with parents who may be unaware of CPAC. And on behalf of CPAC, I thank the school committee for having us tonight and appreciate the support throughout the year. If anybody has any questions, happy to answer any questions.
Thanks so much Pam, I really appreciate that. That was a very succinct presentation, good information. Are there any questions or comments from the committee?
No. Oh, thank you for all that information. I think there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes and some of the work you all are working on is really important. And maybe a plug for consideration, that there be some, I guess, cross collaboration between Dear J and CPAC? I think that that is a nice opportunity that we might want to consider, once we know who's the liaisons for those.
Interesting. Any other comments or questions from Superintendent Downing?
I just wanted to thank Pam Public for participating in the search process this year. I know you worked a lot with Ms. Jordan in developing those things and that put a lot of time out to do that. And I think we're in good hands for our future. Thank you for being part of that.
Yes, I think so too. I'm eager to get to know her and, and see what, see what's going to come next.
Spoke with Mr. Manchel lately and recently, she's quite excited.
That's great, that's great.
And she comes on July 1st?
July 1st, yes.
All right, great. Any other comments or questions? All right, thanks Pam. Look forward to seeing you next time. All right, guys, we are moving on in our new business. I would just like to put it to the committee that we're, we have a few things left to do and 30 minutes to do them. So this next one is highly anticipated and a continuation of a previous conversation regarding the high school schedule. We would like to welcome Principal Joel Bates to the table of office. He is going to give us a presentation on the design of the future elementary and middle school schedules. So no pressure Joel, but.
I understand.
Well, Mr. Bates is getting ready here. This is, this is really a big moment for us. We've been working with our faculty and staff over the past couple of weeks on sort of an education tour and a collaboration tour to outline some of the things that you're going to see tonight. So you're just going to see some examples and some snippets of what is being done, but we've been working on this for the past 18 months. We saw some challenges coming out of post-pandemic times where a lot of the things we need to overcome were pinned in and locked down by our design. One example would be when we can't secure substitute teachers and we have to use people from within the building, instructional assistants or such. It impacted our ability to deliver services at times because there's just, the bodies weren't there, right? And the schedules locked us in such a way that we couldn't adjust in ways that we need to. So the work that we've been doing, that's just one example of how the work we've been doing over the last 18 months to work, solve these types of problems was a collaborative effort from a large group of leaders. And Mr. Bates is very gracious to be our representative as he, as you know, oversees both the elementary and middle school for the town of Bolton. So with that, Mr. Bates.
And thanks for the opportunity to share the schedule with you. We are really quite excited about the possibilities that this framework is going to provide for us. I think Superintendent Downing alluded to, Dr. Mayo Brown teed this up perfectly. The schedules are a reflection of our values and our priorities and they are a reflection of what we value and prioritize for students every day. Alignment and equity are the values and the priorities at Shoba. And we wanted to look at what we do well and where we can be better in, in terms of understanding the areas where we need to grow to reach these goals. This is the missing piece. This is where we can really start to leverage a lot of what we've been talking about tonight and what we've been working on for so many months. This schedule, we believe, will allow opportunities for cross-district collaboration in ways that we've never had before. And it required all of the principals to be in the room together to work through this and, and to come to agreements. Olivia, you can probably go to the next slide. So Superintendent Downing asked us, tasked us with developing the schedule, a district-wide schedule with these, with these areas in focus, equity across the district and alignment and meeting these time-on learning minutes that are so critical to the adoption of the high-quality instructional materials that we've been building. So throughout this year, we reviewed the strengths of our current school schedules, the available personnel, as Superintendent Downing said, time-on learning requirements, priorities such as common planning times and teacher prep time, lunchtime, how all of that works and fits together as part of the, as part of the majors. We wanted to take the opportunity to learn from the professional learning communities that we built into the schedule, but, but built into this existing schedule. So to learn from that, to learn from wing blocks and how to optimize using those valuable times together and to, and to think out of the box, if you will. And Superintendent Downing's hard and fast task was get it done before the end of the school year so that our faculty would have, and for all the reasons, our faculty would have a, a working schedule on day one, before the end of the school year to look at, you know, where those, you know, what their schedule is going to look like and have this summer to think about it and to thoughtfully plan for it. Yeah, so the what? To accomplish the goals, we have moved to a five-day schedule, it's A through E. A through D days are, yes, and then the excitement builds because. First, I want to call your attention to the graphic on the left. That's an example of what our schedule month-to-month looks like. A days, think of them as orange, B days are yellow, C days are green, D days are blue, and E days are pink. And so for the most part, they fall, A days fall on Mondays and B days fall on Tuesdays. If I had the whole schedule here for you to see, you would see that through the, through our time in school, where there is a day, like an early release day on the 13th of September, the schedule's altered slightly and then brought back into alignment so that we have the same number of A days as E days. And so one of the, one of the things we're most excited about as principals is that the related arts offerings and time blocks are identical across all three counties. the related arts offerings and time blocks are identical across all three towns, the elementary schedule and the middle schedule. In Florence Sawyer's case, overlaid one on top of the other. But thanks, Ross. Keep them coming. So if you look at the middle graphic, you can see the numbers represent sections in a grade level, so 4-3, 4-4, 4-1, 4-2. At the same time, 5-2 and 5-1 would have a related arts class noted above during that first block of time. And that's true in Lancaster, at Mary Rolandson, that's true at the Center School, and that's true at Florence Sawyer School. The great benefit of this alignment is that the gold boxes are the second common planning time that each grade level has in that four-day rotation, which allows for professional learning community time across the district. Collaboration, which is going to be critical as we, as we continue to build and support to Dr. Mayo Brown's point, the criticality of fidelity of implementation of these high-quality materials. And so this is a time for the PLC to come together, to look at data, to talk about student success and challenges, but also to have the opportunity to talk across the district about how we're implementing these materials. And it's pretty exciting. And I could go on, but I know time is... So the E day in our schedule provides some flexibility outside of A through D day. What you see in the third graphic is a related arts schedule on E day, which takes into account the recommendations of our music educators to have band is it within the school day. So we can go to the next one. And again, the middle school schedule is on the same rotation. The E day schedule, again, provides additional flexibility for our middle school students. The grade levels at, and you might say to yourself, well, Hale starts 40, Hale and Luther Burbank start 45 minutes earlier than Florence Sawyer School. The benefit of putting the two related arts classes together in the lower graphic on D day, for example, is that Block 1, after attendance for Florence, this is the Florence Sawyer School, schedule. So that framework for the first Block, E2848381, is the second Block at Luther Burbank and Hale, and that time is aligned. So that can serve as time for content-based teams, for cross-grade level teams, for so many possibilities to come together and collaborate. The first Block in 7th grade is common and the first Block, sorry, second Block in 7th grade and the first Block in 6th grade are also common across the school district. Additionally, we have added in a tutorial block for grades 6 through 8 at the same time, which will allow for a lot of flexibility around meetings and, you know, IEP times that would not impact instructional time, for flex time for a variety of positive outcomes. E day also has a consistent advisory time, again, that equity piece, every week, every week for every school. Additionally, we will be able to build in digital learning computer science skills with our engineering block. Can you go to the last one? So in terms of the implementation this year, we're recommending, we're implementing in our schedule the recommendations that came from the K-12 music team. Engineering, the engineering teachers will work together with our Director of Digital Learning and Innovation to build in that digital learning computer science into the engineering, adjacent to the engineering, but into classrooms, middle school classrooms. Also, our world language team will be working this year to develop a more comprehensive middle school language experience. And health and physical education educators across the district will be exploring integrated wellness models. That's as quick as I can make it.
That was fantastic. Thank you so much, Joel. Do you guys have any ques... So this does not require a vote?
No, this is informational.
This is for our information. Are there any questions that you have, Shandra?
First off, this seems to have a lot of great things on it. Does this have any impact on staffing or space?
Staffing or space? Space, no. Staffing, I think the impact is going to be the flexibility of using staff as a resource that, you know, by aligning these times and by having the grids in core content areas, we're purposeful in aligning where students who require additional services are placed so that we can maximize the staff that we have and ensure that students are getting the high-quality experience that we expect.
So it's budget neutral?
It is budget neutral, yes.
I'll add some color to that. Not only is it budget neutral, what we're doing, what we're finding in our initial reorganization is some efficiencies and optimizations to where perhaps we could be able to deploy other sta... staff in other ways, including our instructional assistants, thus taking off some of those constricting pressures we felt from the previous schedule. So for instance, when a grade level team, we saw an example, a 4th grade team has the same schedule every day. All four teachers have those same schedules. The planning and implementation of specialized instruction or in language instruction for our students or whatever that targeted need is, is now coordinated and aligned in such a way, it is bringing the efficiencies. So if anything, we have a staffing benefit from it.
Okay. So I really appreciate the alignment across the district. I think that is going to be a game changer. When I was reading this, I was fresh off of last night's spring concert for a subset of our students in the district. And you mentioned before, but now it's aligning, I'm just looking for more clarification. You mentioned that there would be music instruction during the school day, so would that impact before-school teaching that happens at elementary level?
The goal is to bring the instruction into the school day, to bring band, to bring...
I would also add that each school has had a different approach.
Yeah.
Particularly in music. And so right now, the principals are working with our music educators on how do we commit to these common principles across the district and deliver our programs and without compromising the programs. So they will continue to be robust music programs.
I actually have a few questions. One of them was related to the music program. So I know it says that you're implementing the recommendations of the K-12 music team, and I'm also coming fresh off of a course concert, a band concert, and I think there's a lot of chatter among parents right now about what that's going to look like. I think that one of the concerns is that a new schedule might affect some of the offerings that each school has right now, so are we able to comment on that?
Yeah, I can comment on that. We're going to continue to offer band of 4th and 5th grade along with the instrumental music instruction that goes along with that, based upon the discipline of your instruments as well as at the middle school as well. So yes, the design might look a little bit different, and we're flushing that out right now. But we're going to continue to offer those things. And that's where our music educators have been instrumenting in that.
So we're not...
Unintended.
Unintended.
So just to be clear, we're not eliminating like jazz band and wind ensemble?
Nope.
And then the individualized instruction?
Nope.
And that's going to exist in this new schedule?
Correct.
Although something like jazz band, I think at Hale at least, is going to be after-school style.
Right. We'll still have the after-school activities that are offered in the way that they're offered now. So what I'm saying is those opportunities are not being removed at all. They're, will continue to accentuate. Kids that come forward will have the same opportunities and choices that their predecessors had before them.
Yeah, I really, I have to say, like, I hope that that's the case because when you sit in the audience, you really truly see the diversity of our district in these music spaces. So I'm glad to hear that.
Any other questions?
Me too. I do have two other questions. One is related to the tutorial block. Is there, so if we're building that into the schedule, is there something that's being removed from the schedule? Like, how are we achieving a tutorial block in the schedule?
Mrs. Friend, do you want to talk about how you've used tutorial in the past?
Yeah, sure. And I would say that much of the work has been conversations amongst the three principals and the teams around what's working in their building, oh, you don't have that, what does that look like? Talking about the benefits of that given topic and tutorial being one of them. And so in Lancaster, there's been an all-school tutorial block, which provides an opportunity for students to, some students participate in an additional full-band opportunity to practice, provides flexibility of regrouping of students amongst teachers to get extra help from teachers based on a certain content area, skill, project going on. It also provides for an opportunity to have vertical team time, content vertical team time for teachers, for example, 6th, 7th, 8th grade, social studies team to meet together to plan. It provides an opportunity for staff, that's our student teacher assistance team, to meet as well because students are configured in a different way. So it provides flexibility and a regrouping of students to meet individual or small groups.
I think it sounds amazing. I'm so grateful that that's going to be available to each student. I'm just trying to imagine what it would look like at Florence Sawyer, for example, where I don't think, I don't know if this is replacing a T and E or something like that. I think that's what I'm trying to be.
It looked different in different buildings, so right to your point, you know, I think it's taking different faces at Sawyer.
Yeah, for sure. The T and E at Florence Sawyer, and this is the benefit of Kirk locking us in a room together and saying, get it done. And that, you know, we're able to learn that just by simply making this the same time for all three grade levels, you leverage all of those individuals. Whereas at Florence Sawyer in the past, tutorial enrichment had been opposite band and chorus, and it was only one grade level that was affected at one time.
Okay. I think it all sounds really exciting, especially the five-day rotation schedule. Like, I can just hear kindergartners' parents, like...
I would like to see too, that, I don't know if this is true everywhere, but I know that at Hale, I asked, is tutorial a replacement of flex? Is flex still going away? There's still going to be time in the day for those wind blocks.
Sure, every day.
Tutorial is in addition to that. And it's once a cycle?
E day.
E day.
E day.
Okay.
Wind blocks are five days a week.
So that was my fifth grader's concern, is that tutor, like, she was only given an extra help period once a cycle.
Yeah.
But it's just an additional moment in the schedule where the whole school breaks.
Correct.
And you can do whatever you need to do in addition to the wind blocks.
Yes.
Okay. Great. Any other questions? We're moving right along. Okay, thank you, Principal Bates. Our pleasure having you. So guys, the next piece we're going to talk about here really quick, it was in the parking lot, so we put it on the agenda. It's the quorum rule discussion. I don't know that it's ripe at this moment in time, but I do want to point you toward the regional agreement. It does have a piece in it that the, Desi made us identify our quorum. It says it will be a majority of the committee members excluding vacancies. Period. And so I hope, that's been like a question for us, and we tried to get some clarity from our attorney a few months ago, and it just made our heads spin. So the regional agreement says it shall be a majority of the committee members excluding vacancies.
Yeah, but the other piece to this, if you don't mind.
Please do.
It's not so much the quorum, but it's whether or not we have a threshold for passage of any motions before this body. Our legal counsel opines that we do. But going back to what you just said, when you read that legal opinion and when you start looking at both the bylaws and the policies, I would suggest respectfully to Attorney McCarroll or Mello, that the question is certainly up for debate. I think it really, and the reason that I had asked to be put on the agenda was that I would like, as one member of this committee, I would suggest and I would like to see that our committee make an affirmative statement as to whether or not we think that we should have a threshold number of votes for passage. My personal opinion is I think that there are significant compelling reasons against that. And if I might articulate those in one minute or less, Madam Chair? Okay. So what our, what our legal counsel has suggested is, is that based on the language of our bylaw, which is in contravention to what our policy says on voting methods, is that we would have to have a minimum of four votes on any motion to pass any action before this committee. That, from my perspective, I think that that somewhat, it does something which, as a member of this committee, I find to be an anathema, which is by creating a threshold, you essentially add an additional weapon to the abstention arsenal. Under the rules of order, an abstention is a nullity. It is a non-vote. It doesn't count against the action. However, once you create that threshold, you then allow members who, if we have like six or seven members here, we allow members to strategize and to deny the action of the committee simply by an abstention, by denying the threshold vote. So by example, if we have six members here on a given evening, and it comes down to three in favor, two against, it then comes down to that last vote, that person can then affect the outcome of the vote by simply abstaining. An abstention should never have any impact or outcome effect on any action that we take. But in that particular case, they can sit there and say, well, I'm not really want to vote in favor of this, but what I'll do is I'll abstain and thus deny the vote. So I think there's another compelling reason that we may want to not have a threshold vote. And it comes down to the makeup of this committee. If we look at the makeup of the committee, we have four members from Lancaster, four members from Stowe, and only three from Bolton. So what that would essentially mean is that under no circumstance could the Bolton contingency ever push forward any initiative in front of this committee. They would never be able to on their own be able to pass a motion. The four representatives from Lancaster could do that, the four representatives from Stowe could do that, but Bolton could never do that. And again, I think that's a bit inequitable and unfair. So I guess it all comes down to whether or not committee members feel that we absolutely have to have a threshold for passage. I guess looking at it from the opposite side, some might argue, well, you know, four is a fairly fair and reasonable consensus number. Anything less than that, maybe it's not really the will of the committee. But, you know, a lot of times you see different languages when it comes to voting methodology. Some say, and our bylaw talks about a majority of the quorum, whereas our policy says a majority of the members present and voting. That's what it should be. So in any particular case, if we have six members, if there's three vote in favor, two opposed, and the abstention, I'd say, I would suggest that in that particular case, that motion should pass. Our legal counsel suggests otherwise, but ultimately it's our decision. And wherever we go on this, regardless of whatever we do, if we continue with the threshold vote, if we do away with the threshold vote, we do really need to harmonize the bylaw with the policy, so.
This feels like something for next year.
Yeah.
Are you all in agreement? Can I get a polling of the committee? Can we bring this forward in some more detail next time?
Sure.
Fantastic. And I might charge the secretary with spearheading it.
Sure.
Okay.
But I'm biased. I want you to know I'm biased on this, so.
You like bias, especially obvious bias. That's okay. Just want you to put it on the table. All right, everybody, let's move on. Thank you, Joe, for that. School committee manual presentation. Let's talk about it, Sharon. Help us understand what we are looking at here.
Okay. So I don't know if people have...
So I don't know if people have had a chance to look at the document that was shared or not. Hopefully, they have because that's part of our protocol. So just to give you a little bit of a starting point here, the manual, when we started digging into it, there were several sections of the manual that exist now that were, contain some same or similar information stated in different ways. And so a lot of the process and why it took the time it took was that it took time to analyze each section and to combine the information to avoid redundancies and to make sure that we were being true to the intent of what the manual was saying. So the process, this is the process that we went through. We went through, we took each section of the manual, and individual people took a section. So I took a section, Amy took a section. And just read through it for content, to make sure that the content reflected our current practice, our current policies. And where it was outdated, we suggested updates. So that was our starting point. And then we went through each section and combined like with like to consolidate and eliminate those redundancies. We revised the order of the manual to present information in an order that builds from the most basic information that new members coming on board need, and then to more in-depth information on specific topics. And we hope that this will provide a better resource for all members, but specifically for new members coming in to make it a little bit more manageable. And we added links throughout, so rather than having a handbook that is 68 or so pages long, I think that was the length of what's there, it's a shortened document with external links to different topics. What that, I hope, will allow us to do is, for example, as the protocols change, which we vote on new protocols each summer, am I using the right word?
Yep.
Okay. They will get updated in the document, and then the link will automatically reference the updated version. So the hope is that the manual will be able to be updated organically as our policies or different parts of that procedures change. So what I did, what you have to look at is, you have the new document, and in the side on the comments, there's a reference to where you can find the like information in the existing manual, because it's impossible to do a side-by-side comparison the way the sections were reordered and consolidated. So if you want to see what the original language was, the comment will tell you where to find it. The new document is our proposal of what we think will be most useful to the committee going forward. And I guess what we are looking, would be looking for now is feedback. And once we get the feedback, so that all of the content is correct and updated, then we'll do final formatting, or somebody will do final formatting since the committees are being reconstituted at this time.
Excellent. Thank you, Sharon. Ton of work. Did you want to add something, Jack?
So, I can't see that. Is there a way to?
If you refresh it, it will shut.
Okay. And if we, if we did have minor revisions, we can just email them to Sharon.
So we want to approve, we're looking for a motion? No. Yeah. So I'll tell you what, guys, what we could do is if, we could bring this through to fruition at the workshop also, and if you're not, if you don't feel like you're ready to just accept it tonight, that's okay, but this, I've kind of fine-toothed on this all the last couple of days, and it's, it looks great to me. Is there anything on here that you don't like?
Yeah, so I just think it would be great if we could cohesively just use neutral pronouns, and there is some use and some not. And so I have all of those, so maybe in the, could we make an amendment to include the edits drafted?
So why don't you guys have highlighted all those sections?
Yep.
Can you change it in there?
No.
Yeah, I can.
Right now, you can.
Okay.
At the start of the meeting, you couldn't.
I just need, I just need.
Okay.
How many other, Jackie?
There. One, two, three, four.
Okay, well, where?
Minor.
Four?
No. No, three, sorry.
So what you're, yeah, you drop your, like, is it in the introduction?
Copy and paste and put it on top. That'd be okay? So that's visible? And then I can drop it in.
What are you looking to change?
Just give me an example. Yeah, so for example, third section, school committee member qualifications, oath of office, the first line proposed to edit to reflect, what page are we talking about?
Um, right beginning pages.
So for example, the...
Second paragraph.
Thank you. It's minor.
Sure.
Third, okay, so third paragraph.
Alina, can you, do you see?
I can just do it right now on.
It was the he, she that you wanted changed, wasn't it?
Yeah, because it, sometimes we're using they, sometimes, so it's just cohesive in the whole document.
So you leave them all they? Them?
Yeah, so from which they are elected as an example.
Okay, so they're all, you're all changing everything to they and them?
Do it right now.
Fantastic. But those are the changes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So my comment affects the previous item, this item, and the next item. I'm going to admit that I haven't read all of the governing documents that affect this body, whether it be the, the three-town agreement, or our bylaws, or the protocols, or the policies. There's a lot of them, and hopefully, this document references them liberally rather than creating new things from whole cloth, because I think to the extent that we do make proclamations, if we have some sort of voting rule we put in place, it should be written into the appropriate documents so that we're not digging through meeting minutes to find if something was approved, or, you know, make sure all the right documents are updated rather than piecemeal making changes and trying to figure out when these changes were made, because it just makes it really hard to keep it together. And so whatever change we come up with with respect to voting or keeping things the same, I think our goal should be to make sure that our governing documents are updated rather than coming to some vote, that we vote some protocol or procedure in place.
Got it. Agreed. I think that, like, the quorum piece, we can put that into the policy. The warrant stuff, we tried to find a place to put it, and there's just nowhere to put it because, well, we'll talk about that in the next item. But on the manual, what else?
I just have a clarifying question under the district mission section. Seems like there might be a comment in there that needs to be resolved or something.
Is that the red?
Yeah. Yeah, it says include the core values, vision, statement, and mission from the strategic plan, also include the, like, is that just a note that we're going to update?
That was a formatting note for us, because we had talked about including that information. But more specifically, we had talked about including it formatted as it is presented in the strategic plan, because there's a visual impact to that. And the thought behind that is that when you are reading a document of that size with that much information in it, the more visual help there is, it makes it easier to take it in. And so the thought was to include the visual impact of those statements. We don't have access to that, so we need to finish this and I think send it to Alina because she has, I think, the access to that.
Can you check out the strategic plan itself?
The vision statement, the core values, and the mission that are all in the strategic plan and formatted.
The graphic.
Yes, the graphic, the formatting.
I actually think you could just, I put the hyperlink to the strategic plan there earlier.
You can do that.
You could just hyperlink to, you could say that the district mission, vision, core values, and visioning, vision statement can all be found at the strategic plan.
Okay, so then take out the comment, and, I don't have a computer, so if you can do this for me, please. And you can find the vision statement or the strategic plan, whatever, at the link. And then, do we have a link to this, the DEIBs?
Yeah, that's my only other comment, is that we should link it instead of just saying...
Okay.
Yeah, because I think it's actually on the website, or something like that. Yeah, so it would be easy to link.
Just a comment, I guess, in reference to what I was going to, is how frequently are we updating this? Like, on a yearly basis, would we?
It would become the, one of the responsibilities of the communications subcommittee. Go ahead, John.
It's a minor thing, but under a school committee officers, I think it should reference Massey policy, but our policy. AAE, because we have a policy.
What's that, what page are you on?
Three.
Just don't forget to link it to DEIBs, so that it's on the top.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll help format if you can.
So here's, here's what I'm going to say, just for the sake of time right now. If there is anything else that you would like Sharon to put into the document or reformat, send it to her, and we will finalize this at the workshop. Does that sound okay for everybody? Are you guys clear with that? Okay, I know time is late. We do have some really important stuff to do, so I need you guys to hang in, and I know that that's a horrible thing to ask. Can I just get a thumbs up? This is what we do. Are you guys okay staying a little bit longer? Okay, I know.
I know.
Let's see. I have a tail under the table, it's like, I'm losing you. No! Don't go. So thank you, Sharon, for taking that on. It's like almost exactly where it needs to be. So just a few more things probably will, will throw you away. All right, guys, summer warrant signature protocol. I am going to follow up on something that Mike did at the last meeting. The problem with the current protocol that we developed a while back is that it authorized the chair of the budget and warrant subcommittee to sign the warrants during the summer, but Mike was that person, he needed a longer on the committee. So we have a glitch. And so what I would like to do as a stopgap measure, and not as a permanent one, but something to carry us through the summer, and to give the new budget and warrant subcommittee time to redevelop this and bring it back to the whole committee, maybe by October 1, is to move to authorize the chairperson of the school committee to sign the warrants on behalf of the school committee until the time that a new chair of the budget and warrant subcommittee is assigned. Period. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Didn't that original, was it protocol that we developed? Didn't it reference the chair or designee?
So there really is no, so the glitch is, the budget and warrant subcommittee doesn't really exist right now. And so it's either the chair or the secretary of that subcommittee, but like that's...
The designee, I mean, I don't know.
I know.
I know what you're saying.
But it's like dissolved at this point, and so...
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Master of Law says this committee has the authority to appoint anyone on the committee to sign the warrants. That's all you have to do.
Yeah, so I'm asking you guys to vote in favor of this motion, to give me the authority to sign the warrants over the summer until the budget and warrant chair is appointed, and then that budget and warrant subcommittee can make a new protocol if they want. Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Fantastic.
Is that different than the electronic signatures?
Nope, I'm still going to do it electronically. And you all can sign them, right? So all of, there's places for all of us to sign, it's just that they can't be executed until the designee signs. And so I will be the designee now. And so Ross, come hunting for me.
Vacation for you this summer.
I promise, I will do it. Okay, guys, we're going to talk now about the auditor selection, and this is going to be Dana's show here. Dana has been working hard with the audit advisory, and they have, they want to bring forth to us right now a new auditor. So go ahead, Dana, let us know what's going on.
Okay, so I'm just going to summarize quickly. So we recently sent out our piece for audit services for fiscal year '25. It was really important to the committee that we explore our options. This in no way reflects our feelings about the quality of auditing services or level of customer service we've received from our current auditor, Markham. This is just standard best practice. So we received two non-price proposals. There are currently only three firms in the area that offer services for regional districts. One was recently acquired, it was four, now it's three. So we did get two responses, and we met virtually with both firms last Friday. It was Roselli, Clark &amp; Associates, and then Markham. So after the presentation from both firms, each committee member ranked their selections. Roselli, Clark &amp; Associates received unanimous support as our first pick prior to price proposal reviews. After Ross disclosed the pricing for each contract, the audit advisory set the vote for selection to yesterday. And so yesterday, we voted to recommend the selection of Roselli, Clark &amp; Associates to be contracted to perform the auditing services for the district. Unfortunately, David, Yesway, Yesway is his name, if I'm not mistaken, he had a last-minute conflict, so he wasn't able to attend, but he did end up passing along his agreement that, again, he would have unanimously also picked that. So the audit advisory wanted to again make clear that we've been content with the services provided by Markham, but there were a number of reasons we feel the switch to Roselli would be in the best interest of the district. So we were impressed that the founding member, a founding member of Roselli, Clark made the presentation himself and then sought our business specifically. This really echoes the smaller, local field that was spelled throughout the presentation. We did not feel like we were one of many presentations, and we feel like this would even be more apparent working with them directly. When we asked about how they prevent turnover, they disclosed that their dedication, they disclosed their dedication to their employees by, they recently increased salaries, and they dispersed work based on the employees' home locations, and this has been a very successful effort that has resulted in no movement for the last five years. We thought that was, like, just really great. There was also willingness to discuss clients lost and given up. They were really transparent about that and didn't seem to flinch, you know, diving into that with us, which was also really important. They're an active Massey participant. They passed all 10 of their quality peer reviews that have been conducted. And there was also a colleague of Ross, who's from a different district, who's a CPA himself, and this is a firm that he would highly recommend, so we thought that was also like a glowing recommendation. So, yeah, I don't know, do I do the motion, or, okay?
I'll do the motion for you. Can you remind the committee, what does the regional agreement require? How long will the contract last? Ross?
It doesn't specifically say. From my recollection, I can pull it up, but it just says that the school committee shall solicit and hire an auditing firm, to paraphrase.
They both offered three years in the contract, but that was what we were doing this month.
Excellent. And so this is not for the forensic audit, this is for the annual audit services.
Plus of additional services, whenever we have any additional audits for other, for student activities, school lunch services, the preparation of our excess and deficiency files, things like that. So it's sort of the, we compare it to, I call it the all-in price on the services that we would need, so. And beginning next year, obviously, we're going to do the additional pieces, given it would be the first year, so.
And the price is within range?
Correct.
All right, I'm going to make a motion. I move to approve the audit advisory committee's recommendation that Roselli, Clark &amp; Associates certified public campaigns be contracted to perform auditing services to the district as outlined in the regional agreement and provided by, and provide any other auditing services as required. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Amy. Any, sorry, any further discussion? All those in favor of voting recommendations? Thank you to the audit advisory committee. What amazing work you guys did. I know Dana put in a ton of work, so did Ross. Thank you, guys, for bringing that to us.
I'd be weird till 9:20 to do this. Most of us do.
See, they're benefits. Speaking of money, let's continue on with finance and operations on the agenda, and Ross, what can you, well, it looks like we're going to start with the appointment of a district treasurer. treasurer, which is an annual tradition required.
So as you recall from the fall, Victoria Chardier was with our human resources department, took a position elsewhere, but remains on as a contracted treasurer. She's here multiple times a month, and we're continuing to be in close contact. I have not seen or felt any sort of impact to that, so I feel very comfortable if we are with treasurer services.
All right, let's go for a motion.
I move to appoint Victoria Chardier as the district treasurer for fiscal year '25.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Yeah, I know it's late, I have a question. And I will preface this, Madam Chair, and I'll direct it to Mr. Mulcaren. The treasurer position for this district is, I mean, I understand the statute, you do not have to be a member of the regional school committee to be the treasurer. But thinking back to my previous districts, we had a member of our district committee who was the treasurer. And all I remember her doing was that her facsimile signature was on every payroll check. Over and above using the facsimile signature on a payroll check, what exactly does the treasurer do for the district?
So essentially, the main functions are making sure that all of our revenues that come in are put in the right, not only fiscal accounts, so on the banking side, but also working with us to make sure that it is accounted for in the correct areas on our revenue side of our book, so that's a big piece of it. There's also all the turnover of any checks that come in, cash that comes in, all of that, through student activities funds, which have a lot of sort of activity each month, and those are the major, major pieces that they work with. Also currently, another major component is the transfer of money from our investment accounts of the first bond for the high school. So we have to work with those financial folks to make sure all the money is transferred in order to pay, do the payables on the monthly approved invoices for the building project, and all that part.
Right, but it, may I, may I, isn't the bulk of all that work done by your officers?
No, because that's the cap, I would call it the cash side of things. So that's all of the banking transfers versus the accounting features, what we do, and then it's recognized.
Okay, and that's, and this treasure position, that's a stipend position, we pay for that?
Correct.
Yeah, and what's the salary for that?
It's for the entire year, 20,000.
All right, any further discussion on the motion of reappointing Mr. Chardier? All those in favor, raise your hand? Looks like we have everybody, okay, thank you very much. Yeah. All right, guys, we're going to move on to the Innovation Career Pathways Implementation and Support Grant, so.
Just turn it over to Mr. Mulcaren.
Assistant Superintendent Friend is here to help out with anything as well. You've heard a lot about the Innovation Pathways Program, you've heard about the position, job description this evening, so this is the support thereof. So I've also linked the presentation done by high school staff on Innovation Pathways. So what you see before you is that grant. As Superintendent Downing mentioned, we've received our award notice for this grant. We're still waiting for the grant to be loaded into the DESI website, which we'll then upload our budget and get all the financial pieces in place. But the approval of the grant today allows us to move forward with that, and again, we will not make any expenditures until that money is received.
All right, so guys, I'm going to go with motion, and then we can open it for discussion. I move to accept the Innovation Career Pathways Implementation and Support Grant FC 419 as presented in accordance with school committee policy DED. Do I have a second?
Do I have a second?
I'm going to give that one to Jesse. Jesse seconded that. Sorry, sorry. Any discussion? This is fantastic. Thank you so much, guys. All those in favor? Yay, money! Okay, moving on, we are going to, I would like to, if the committee is amendable to it, the committee is amendable, we're moving on to, well, I missed something, I'm sorry. Unfinished business, yeah. So we're going to look at the Dear J membership. As you guys can see, there's a spreadsheet linked in the meeting materials that shares with you guys the 10 people who have volunteered to be members of Dear J. So not only do we have the five, or, excuse me, the four members who have been previous members of Dear J, who are looking to remain and stay and continue to help, we have six additional people, two of which have been kind of periodic or previous members, but then additional members of the communities who have agreed to volunteer. So it is my motion that we, as a school committee, approve all of the 10 members named there on the spreadsheet, to become members of Dear J for the next school year. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you Sharon. Questions?
I do have a question. I'm, this is not something that we've done before, so why is it, what's different?
And so for clarity, if you, Alina, will you click on that hyperlink? So I think that you guys know the genesis of Dear J. If, if you don't, it's not necessarily going into detail here, but when we created Dear J, we were really trying to do something great, and we did. But the way that it's been operating as a, you know, since its genesis, has not necessarily been complete compliance with our policy. Our policy says this, that when we form an advisory, it is for one year only, and then we need to renew that advisory annually. By passing this motion, we will be renewing the Dear J advisory, and appointing these 10 new people to sit on the advisory for one year, right? It's like all in our policy. At our workshop, we will then fulfill the rest of the policy, which is to give them a specific charge, to define their work, so that they don't feel, you know, lost in all of this. And so the workshop, we will continue to set this up.
Okay, so can I follow up with you? So does that mean that membership is set and others cannot join?
It does really have to be set. However, to the community, if you're still watching, anybody who wants to join moving forward, we can just approve them. It's really that simple. But the membership of advisories really does need to be specific, set, and accountable, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and there's an opportunity within the Dear J structure, so I would encourage everybody to read the guiding document. There will need to be some changes, because there is not an alignment in some areas, but that guiding document's really important, that you all take the time to read, because it will inform, I think, our conversation and our work in combination with the equity audit recommendations.
And Dear J also is a unique advisory, in that it needs to make space for people who don't necessarily want to put their name on a list. And so there are, there is this working group capacity, where they can reach out to the community and get extra voices, without actually having them be members of the committee. Now, it's all public meeting, they're subject to open meeting law, so, you know, it is a risky space to be doing work in for some people, and we need to recognize that and honor it. But these 10 people have put their names forth, they want to do the work formally. Go ahead Shandra.
It looks like there are 11 people.
Got it?
But two, I really don't like that over half of the people are from one town.
I also agree.
So I thought of that myself as well. That said, I don't know that this work is town-specific. If it were budget-oriented, or something that perhaps one town would look to advantage itself over another, I would be more concerned. I think that we want to garner as many voices at the table as possible, and if they happen to come from Bolton, I am actually okay with that, that's my personal opinion.
So some of these aren't checked, so is there really only six people who are participating?
So some of them are just new? And so the ones that are current members are checked? I just thought that that might be good context for you guys.
Sorry, just to-
Yeah, one is a previous member who's looking to come back, their, you know, schedule will allow for it. One has been a periodic participant, I thought that would be useful for you guys to know. My motion is recommending that we put forth all of these names, which represent, you said 11 people.
Clarifying question, and I'm a little misted, because I was out for a minute. An advisory to the school committee, do they need to have a school committee member? Don't. Because I was, I always ended the impression that a subcommittee was formed of all school committee members, and an advisory was formed of school committee members and community members.
Professional staff can be appointed, but by the student- By us, at the recommendations of the superintendent, but it doesn't have to have a member. That said, we do have a liaison position, which Jackie and Sharon have in pass served in that liaison position, but they're not voting members of the advisory, they are voting members of this committee. And when the advisory brings the information to us, that's when we exercise our right to vote. So we're just trying to bring into line this practice, this, the Dear J advisory, we want them to be as legitimized as possible, so that their work is, is as legitimate as it can be. All right, so any further questions?
Sorry, this might be a very basic question. The first person on this list, when they say rising junior, does that mean a rising student?
Student.
Interesting. Okay, so they can be under voting age?
Yeah, yeah, they're just advisors. Not just advisors, they are advisors! Any other questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Any objections? Okay, great. So the motion passes. Moving forward, this is what I was going to say, you guys can tell me if you think I'm wrong. Does the committee object to moving our goals reflections to the workshop, at which time we can then set our new goals? Can I get a thumbs up if everybody is okay with that? Anything that will-
And we can have some kind of like, cross communication about the, yes, the transfer of knowledge opportunity.
Yeah, yes. Yep. So guys, just items for next agenda, that is the workshop. Amy, your vice chair, and I, and our secretary, he would like to, we would love to have our Lancaster friend come join us for the trifecta here. We're going to set up the workshop agenda. As always, we will send it out to you guys in advance. Any feedback that you have for us before or after, we would really appreciate. If there's something that you think we should address at the workshop, with regard to our practice, not necessarily business-oriented, but practice-oriented, please send those to me, and at this point, I'm going to move to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. Thanks, guys.